Thursday, October 7, 2021. We'll do the pledge first of all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of the agenda, is there any additions or?
I believe we want to talk about COVID pay.
COVID pays?
Yes. And also, I would like to put my bill on the agenda, please.
And I'd add, I'm gonna, we had a meeting yesterday with the city and I decided who was gonna be on the committee for the ETZ committee on that too.
Did you get my text for that, Commissioner?
Yes. Any other additions? Now to look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed, motion carried. Next we have minutes sent for September 7, 2021. Corrections or changes to the minutes for September 7?
I move to approve the September 7 meeting as printed.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, you have a second.
Second.
On a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed, motion carried. And we had this special meeting for the budget on September 15, 2021. Is there any changes or corrections to that, the minutes there? Now to look for a motion to approve the minutes for September 15.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes for September 15.
The motion, do I have a second?
One second.
On the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, was opposed, motion carried. Next, counts payable. Any questions in the counts payable?
What are the other reimbursements? The 16 to 3288.
It would have been, I'm sorry, I just have the cover page for it. I didn't bring my full booklet.
I can open my emails.
I'll go find out from Sherry, that way you don't have to hold up for that.
I got it.
Who's got it?
Midwest K-9 Alternatives 500, and then there was a doesn't add up to, that's the wrong one because that's a original one because it talks about the reimburse for a motel for emergency service, but that doesn't add up to $16,000 in there. Get the right one.
If you want to do queries, I can go grab it.
Yeah, that's any emails to go look through here?
Yeah.
I can just text Sherry too.
Can we just table the
I got it here.
Resolution until we get that.
I got it here.
Okay.
Okay, it's for, one is for a CHS Incorporated check overpayment of $2,562.75. Other one was consolidated, other reimbursements, $3,557.89. Then JR's Autobody LLC Insurance Check, $10,112.24. Do you need any more information than that or?
So do we have vehicle fix there or what?
No, they're reimbursing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard the reimbursement, I didn't hear it on that one.
Correct. Missy?
Yeah.
Yeah. That was an insurance check. Yeah, so they, we received $16,000 and they reimbursed it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions on the counts payable? Now to look for a motion to approve then.
Make that motion to approve counts payable.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
So move.
A second. Roll call vote then. Commissioner Arthod?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Okay, next, Sheriff Corey Lee.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning. The highlights for the Stark County Sheriff's Department for the month of September 2021. Toll calls for service in September, 1,377. This is up from 1,249 last year. 222 traffic stops, this is down from 238 last year. 54 stops in City Dickson. 168 stops in the county and neighboring small towns. 226 public relation stops, this is up from 199 last year. Seven bar checks, down from 12 last year. Seven theft-related calls for service, that's down from 12 last year. 11 K-9 usages, which is a little low, but they had three separate trainings in September. I don't know why everything got scheduled in one month this year, but it did, trainings and certifications. Responded to 21 accidents. Zero pedestrian, zero fatality, two hit and runs, six injury and 13 property. 57 total arrests. One particular was a report of a burglary at a residence near the airport. If you guys would like to know who that was, I can tell you later. We were able to provide a quick response and the suspect was cashed and placed into custody within two hours of the initial report, so I'm proud of the guys for their response and the way they handled that situation. They did a good job. Several community involvements, one was the kind of a spinoff of the Bach and Barbecue that Taylor's gonna start doing every year. They did very well with that. I hope that continues for them. It was a good event. Richardson School Crash Scenario, which was also very, went very well. And of course, school opened and we had several events correlating with that, just to name a few. If we can move on to the next agenda item.
That'd be fine.
Okay, we ordered three Tahos in September of 2020, and of course, as everyone knows, that's quite the fiasco with ordering and receiving vehicles right now. Those vehicles did finally show up this month. I think, Jesse, are they all here now? Okay. In the meantime, we did find three other vehicles on the ground, luckily. I think one was in South Dakota, one was in Minnesota. Anyway, we have three that we did purchase already this year, not knowing when these towels were gonna show up, and they did finally show up, like I said, this month. I guess our question to you guys is if you would like to purchase those, and I've discussed this with Ms. Richard a little bit, with COVID money. I mean, we certainly could use the extra three vehicles. If you look at our fleet expenses for 2021, we've already pretty much expended that account, which in the past has never happened with vehicle maintenance costs and repairs. It's it's pretty ridiculous what we're spending right now because of the high mileage on our vehicles, so. So is there an amount, I guess, Karen, we've discussed this, is there an amount of COVID money left that we could expend on these vehicles?
Just so the Commissioners are aware, the number, the amount that is left from the 2020 COVID money is about 88,000, so you're aware. And then for 2022, depend, I mean, 2021 COVID money, we are just what we discussed in the budget wise, so if this was to come out of something, it would probably need to come out of the 2021 COVID ARPA money, loss of revenue calculation.
2020, the 88,000 wouldn't qualify for this?
No, the 88,000 would be fine, but that's not enough to cover three vehicles.
We would have enough in our budget to cover the rest.
So that's entirely up to you.
Does this qualify with the ARPA?
It would, since it's under the Sheriff's Department loss of revenue calculation, because then you can use it for the Sheriff's Department.
I would say ARPA because that 88,000 isn't as limited as the ARPA money, correct?
Yeah, that money is gonna just be added to the general fund pretty soon.
The 88?
Correct, yep.
Well, it's whatever the board wishes, but my interpretation is based on this meeting I attended the other day with at the state, that they're getting more flexible with the ARPA money, lot less, more, less restrictive, I guess is where I'm at. I would like to make sure we use our 2020 funds and not put those in jeopardy, so whatever works, I guess, I would support.
So if you wanted to use the 2020 ARPA remaining balance to pay and then have the rest come out of Corey's budget, that is an option.
Would that work for you?
Yes, please.
Well, I would make that motion that we use the balance of the 2020 COVID funds in the amount of approximately 88,000, whatever it is, and that the sheriff use budgeted monies for the rest of that.
What is the total?
Jesse, do you have the total? That's not including the outfitting costs, of course.
I think with outfitting, it comes to about 50,000 each vehicle.
It's a little bit more than that, but yes.
About that.
As I say, it's gonna be a little over that.
Is there a reason we're not using a little bit more of the ARPA funds for this, or?
I don't think we'd really need to use more than that.
Will that, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, will that zero out those COVID funds then?
Yeah, the 88,000, because the rest has already been kind of allocated and Corey had used his portion of the payroll. This is kind of just coming from the other portion of different payrolls that weren't used.
My only concern would be that we're not or that we're overlooking other needs.
Oh no, it would just be zeroing out the 2020 COVID funds, we're not the ARPA.
So none of that money's been earmarked for anything then?
Not what's left of the 2020.
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion?
I did.
You made a motion, you made a motion, right?
Yep.
Okay. Have a second. Okay, now any other discussion? Okay.
It was my fault, sorry.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Arthod?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next Lieutenant Hough.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Candidates talked about body cameras and the cameras we use in general, the cameras in our vehicles, cameras in our interview rooms. I did send Ms. Richard, the quotes that I'd received had a Word document too, it was three pages long. Did you guys get that, or?
Yes.
Should I cover the high points here? If you guys received that and read through it, I'm not gonna read you three pages of Word document in the interest of time, but here to answer questions, I guess the gist of it is, is we're looking for replacement, well, addition of body cameras and some replacement of what is in our vehicles. Right now, I did include it in there, but we are in dire need of replacement of our vehicle server that holds all the videos from the vehicles. Needs to be rebooted every three days or so for us to retrieve videos and for videos to go to it. Cost of that's gonna be about $15,000, or we could subscribe to their cloud-based service where the we'll never have to buy a server again for that video. The problem I kind of see with that is the company that currently does our in-car video was bought by Motorola. Their customer service is now about zero. DPD Dickinson Police had used the same system up until recently. They went to Axon, which is one of the companies I got a bid from here. Kind of the same thing, frustration with that company and their lack to provide a real quality product and service to come behind it. Body cameras, why the body cameras? Dunn County went to body cameras now, Dickinson Police did. Bismarck Police, Mannan Police, Morton County, Burley County, the Highway Patrol. Around this time next year, they will all be wearing body cameras as well. Dickinson Police did. It's a touchy subject with any of the agencies, especially the Highway Patrol being a state agency. They have to put out their RFP, their request for bids, and they don't want to let the cat out of the bag, which way they're leaning one way or the other to make it seem like they've done a backdoor deal. But it seems that these agencies are going to go with Utility BodyWarn as a provider. The difference between the two camera systems, Axon is a almost like a GoPro, a big GoPro that fits into a bracket on your chest. It works, it does a fantastic job. It records really good video, their storage. They have their stuff together. They're a leading company that does it in America right now. The kind of the downside with that camera system and the reason agencies go to Utility BodyWarn is it fits into a cradle, it has to be charged, it has to come out to upload, so the thing's gotta be able to be taken off. Now, the problem is when you get into a tussle with somebody, the camera falls out and it falls on the ground and it's either recording the pavement or it's recording the sky, and then why did you wear it? It's not capturing anything. The Utility BodyWarn's a little bit nicer because it fits into the uniform, so if I had it, I don't have one with me. The business manager from Utility BodyWarn is more than willing to come give a presentation, but we figured at this point, best to just start the conversation. Utility BodyWarn is a camera and it goes inside of our uniform, so what you would see is a little grommet with a lens hanging out of my uniform, and that would be doing the recording. It can't fall off, it can't come out. It's attached to you from the start of your shift to the end. State's Attorney's Office could probably, I mean, the more evidence we get, the better. You know, if we find drugs in a house on traffic stop, if all we have is a vehicle camera, you're relying on that officer to give you an accurate depiction of where he found it and what if he's wearing a body camera, it shows that. It shows, hey, these drugs were here, this is what I did. Catches what people say it's another microphone in addition to what's in the vehicle. More evidence, more successful prosecutions, I think. In the case Utility BodyWarn, all of that evidence would be in the same place. I had done a all-in quote with them. Cameras for everybody in the department that would need cameras, all the vehicles that need cameras, and the interview rooms, our interview room server needs to be replaced too. That one's a little less expensive because it's a smaller server. But if we went with Utility BodyWarn, all that video would save to the same place, making it easier for the officers and for the state's attorney to have access to it. Right now, we have a system called WatchGuard in our vehicles. Little bit outdated, 14 of them need to be updated, as well as I think we have four or five vehicles that don't have even the current outdated WatchGuard in them. If we, if we stayed with those in our vehicles, we'd have to keep replacing those out of pocket. They're not on like some replacement plan or subscription plan, which is kind of what these other two vendors are akin to. We could add body cameras in addition to what we currently have, but then video is being stored in three separate places, making it harder to get. It's usually not the attorneys getting the video, it's Maya, it's the assistants up there, and they're getting video and evidence from multiple agencies, us, Dickinson PD, the Highway Patrol, and it's just scattered about at the moment. It'd streamline things, make things a lot easier. These plans, whether it's through Axon or through Utility BodyWarn, it's set up similar to a subscription where you you contract it in to pay a certain amount, they've got it broken down to the first five years. That includes everything, installation, replacement every 36 months. They come in, they take all the old cameras, body cameras, interview room cameras, everything, and replace them with new cameras. Keeps us from having to purchase cameras, like I said, 14 of ours are outdated, at about $5,000 apiece, we're we're up there where you know, we're gonna have to spend almost a significant amount of money just to make ourselves current and keep doing what we're doing, which isn't which isn't ideal.
So Jesse, based on the information you sent over, it's about a $75,000 difference crack between the Axion and the, and the other suggestion you had with the Rocket IOT ones?
Yes, Utility BodyWarn.
Or not, utility, there you go.
Yep, they're the ones that, Rocket IOT is their system in the vehicle. Don't get into too much of the complexities there, but it about $75,000 difference. Like I said, Axon is kind of the leader, they're a little less flexible on their pricing. The two apples-to-apples quotes, when we said we, we wanted them to quote kind of less than we actually needed with Axon, and then we added the officers and the vehicles with the Bellfield contract. I had Utility BodyWarn initially quote the same amount of body cameras and vehicles because I wanted to see apples-to-apples. And then that apples-to-apples quote, there was quite a difference, and thinking around $75,000, yes.
Yeah, it, it looks like you're either at 399, 525, or then for the Axion, you're at 325, 830, correct?
Yep.
And that's for a five-year contract with all the, everything included for the cameras?
Yes.
Chairman French.
Yes.
I believe this may be the server itself, that could fall into an IT-related line item, the server itself.
I mean, either way, it's not in the current budget, so if you, if you decided to pay for this, I'd probably just do it all as one, and then either do the 2021 ARPA funding for this out of the loss revenue calculation, or we can do it out of a special project, either one.
It could fall under IT and maybe possible grant?
Looks like you apply for.
As far as grants that we could apply for, the Department of Justice really wants all law enforcement, across America, federal, local, state, to be wearing body cams, and they offer a grant program. Lieutenant Mayor looked into it, the specifics of it, I don't really know, but we had talked briefly. If you look at the quote from Axon, the purchase of the body cams, not the service contract, not the storage, just the purchase of the body cams was about, I'd say $15,000. Without reading through all my notes. That's just the purchase of, I think it was 22. DOJ, their grant process will only cover about half of that cost, so about $7,500. But to qualify for their grant, you have to maintain the footage in such a way, you have to have somebody oversee the footage. It was worded in such a restrictive way that we looking at it, we said we almost have to hire a part-time employee just to manage our footage and get the $7,500 from the DOJ. We didn't consider it an option, we stopped applying for it. The grant period Uh, the grant period from the DOJ has expired. It'll be back every two, three, two, three times a year, they open it back up, trying to get more agencies to do it. Um, if we wanted to take another look at it, but. The initial look was it ju- it just wouldn't be worth the time or the money, you know, saving seventy-five hundred dollars to.
So you almost have to hire another person just to keep track of it.
Or increase the workload on somebody we have, which is a, a real, real stretch.
Okay, any questions for?
Have one, um, in your opinion, based on the research you've done. Is this, you know, the technology obviously is getting better, does the, uh, like a lot of the electronic stuff is. Are those costs going down or as technology gets better, costs are also going up in your opinion?
I think costs, as technology gets better, costs are maintaining a certain level, because they, you know what they can charge? We've seen costs go up because of the shortage of electronics, I mean, it's the same thing slowing down our vehicles. The electronics and the chips being produced aren't keeping up, so prices are going up. Uh, just because of that, and I would hope to see them come down actually a tiny bit, but. As technology improves, they're pretty much remaining constant, I think. When I started with the Sheriff's Department nine and a half years ago, those DVD-based systems that are now very outdated. They were brand new and we were buying them back then, and I think they're four thousand dollars each. So our wireless ones now, um, being better technology. Uh, costing five thousand dollars apiece, it isn't the biggest, biggest jump in price.
So the reason I ask that question is, uh, obviously, if we do this, we'd probably do it through the ARPA twenty-twenty-one. Funds and would there be an incentive for us to rather pay it over five years, pay it, pay it in one, one lump sum base?
Both companies will accept lump sum, um.
Is there a discount for it?
The Axon, I do not believe there is, uh, utility body worn, there is some room in that quote. Talking to their business manager, um, great guy, former chief of police, a lieutenant, retired law enforcement. He, uh, he, he doesn't do the actual quotes. But I let him know what our Axon quote was and he said, you know, our three ninety-nine and including the interview rooms. And they had less cameras, no interview rooms, he says, we could actually probably come down to three eighty-three to match. Theirs if that tipped it, and I said, well, take every little bit we can get, we'll see. So there's, with utility body worn, there's potentially some flexibility with Axon, everything is, is set. No matter what agency you are, what size you are, that's what they want.
Utility, utility one is the one that has the little.
Little grommet that fits inside your uniform, it can't fall off.
I've seen the Axon ones and they do kinda hang there like walkie-talkies, so I could see how if you're running or if somebody hits you, it would just fall off. I could see that.
It happens, I, I really, it would, it would be super if we could follow in the footsteps of Dickinson Police. You know, work hand-in-hand with them, have the same cameras. But in, in this, you know. I watched the body cameras fall off as we're training or watching them train and. If you, eh, a good case study in one of, when, when his business manager presented it to us. There's a shooting in Georgia, uh, intoxicated male in a Wendy's drive-through. Uh, two officers pulled him out of the car, they were both wearing Axon body cams. He started fighting with them when they went to put him under arrest, he ended up taking one, the officer's taser, they ended up shooting him. Both of their body cameras fell off and were recording the streetlights as they ran out of frame of the vehicle and, and shot him. And none, because of that, none of it was captured on camera.
Defeat so purpose of having him, then that's right.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we have to follow through with this.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
Well, would, I guess, if, uh, do you have a preference in which system you, you, uh, would prefer?
Speaking to Lieutenant Mayor Sheriff Lee, um. In my mind, eh, even though the Axon will fall off and can fall off, there's lots of other big selling points to it. Utility in the same token has different really big selling points, the biggest one being I can't, it, it can't fall off, it's part of your uniform. The other is, um, the way it's set up, the camera itself, it's got sensors and driver scopes in it, similar to your smartphone. Um, if an officer were to say have a heart attack and fall down by themselves. The camera senses the officer's down, not moving, and it alerts all the other officers that you might have an officer down and this is where he's at. There's some tracking features with the utility body worn, um. That we don't have currently with our technology, uh, being able to live camera in and see exactly what's going on with that deputy. Tracking location in a different way, um, if we lose internet in our vehicles, I, I can't tell you where my guys are because. The internet went down and short of asking them, hey, where are you? I don't know, with these, uh, it is a. Unit communicating wirelessly too that will tell us, where it's a way to know where they are if, if everything else fails. Um, the other thing too with the, the Rocket IOT is a name for the modem they put in the vehicle, that actually plugs into the OBD-two port. So not only can we monitor the deputies with that system, we can monitor the vehicle, what temperature is it running at? What's the oil look like, um, it's actually really, really neat technology. Probably more information than I'll ever be able to, to process, but.
You both of the companies offer like, you said the one thirty-six months comes in and upgrades everything and do they both offer that?
What was that I'm saying?
Do they both follow that same type of?
They both follow the same model, yes, every thirty-six months, they're gonna come in, update everything. Um, it, it was a weird business model to me at first because they're saying, well, every thirty-six months, but the contract's only five years, so. If you let the contract expire at five years. You still got a system that's still gonna work, but they're no longer going to warranty it, support it. Um, you'd probably lose your cloud storage because that costs money. Um, and then when you renew that contract after that first year of the renewal. They'll come in and replace everything again, your three years doesn't start over. Kinda the upside of the bot- utility body worn is they limit that to ten percent more than you're paying per year. The first five years, so if technology takes a big leap and we go, yep, we wanna renew and we were paying. You know, what is it they're asking on the quote? Seventy-nine thousand nine hundred per year. If they, if we were paying that, they're gonna cap it at a hundred and ten percent of that, so eighty-eight thousand. Per year for the next five years would be their top limit, Axon doesn't limit their contract renewal.
That was gonna be a question, plan on, on renewal. Where they were gonna be at if they've told you roughly where renewal would be or anything like that, so that's, that's good.
With, with utility, it's limited to a hundred and ten percent of the previous contract.
Just one last question, uh, obviously Axon's aware of the issues of their stability of the, of the, uh, camera. Are they doing anything to try that, make that a better system?
They do, they come out with different mounts, mounting features, ways to do it, but. That's a camera that, the way it works, it has to be charged, uh, which the other one does, they've got batteries in them. But it also has to be put in a dock in order to offload the video. Um, so it, it has to come on and off at least kind of easily. For them to be able to get the video off of it and to get it charged, where the utility one, once it's in there. Um, you can just take what would essentially be a cell phone charger, plug it into the camera, you wouldn't even need to take the camera out of the vest. It is communicating with the vehicle, offloading all of its video. Um, that one's actually a little bit better too because it's offloading video every five seconds. So say, uh, you hit me with a baseball bat or shot me right in the camera. I'm gonna get at least up to five seconds before that happened, even if the camera's completely destroyed.
Are they activated differently or not?
The, uh, so whether you guys care or not, the, uh, utility one is the only one endorsed by the NAACP and the reason for that is because. With the, uh, Axon, you have to take it off, like you said, dock it, that's where the. The video plays in, with the, uh, utility, it's uploading to the cloud immediately, the officer cannot manipulate the footage, cannot. Mess with it, it's going straight up, it's gone, it's done, he can't do anything with it, the other reason is, uh, because they don't get knocked off. It's there, it's solid, it's not gonna fall off.
So. Now, PD just got theirs like in the last couple of months or something like that, and I'm sure that they probably. Um, looked at both systems, is there, do you know any reason why they chose this one?
I don't, Jesse Mike.
They did a great deal of research, uh, some of it they shared with me, um. Utility body worn, being the second biggest company in America, they had less of a progressive. Sales campaign, if you wanna call it that. The, the call for body cameras started in. States where you lo- you see a lot of, of police misconduct and stuff generally along the coasts. Um, and that's where utility body worn went to sell their cameras and they focused on the coasts. Um, and it was within the last five, six months that they went, we need to get a guy into North Dakota, South Dakota, right in the middle. And start selling these guys our cameras too because we're doing it right. And, uh, that's why. Now they've come into the picture and they, uh. It, uh, to me is, it's a more, it doesn't have some of the features Axon has, but it does away with a lot of the bad features Axon has.
What kind of emotion do we have to make on this?
You wanna approve it or not and? Purchase of it?
I guess I'd like to per- approve this, make a motion to approve it and proceed with. However, we proceed with it.
And where are you on the funding from?
I guess if we can use it, the twenty-twenty-one COVID add it all.
Dickinson PD used their cares funding last year to fund part of the project.
I guess it would be up to Karen to make the suggestion on that.
So Bernie, maybe your motion, are you leaning towards the body worn ones?
Yes, I am.
Which is what's, I'd probably say that you would move to accept the five-year contract with the body worn cameras. And then, um, have the funding come from twenty-twenty-one ARPA funding.
Okay, that works for me, that's my motion.
Okay. Have a second.
I guess we have to second in order to do discussion, unless it's a motion by myself, but, uh, I'll second that. So, but the question I have is with, could, if we can get a significant savings by going through, uh, a one lump, uh, one lump sum. Payment, we should do that, uh, because if we're doing this over five years, are we running out of? Uh, of the, uh, ARPA expenditure, um, time treatment, I can't remember if that's twenty-six or not, I think it is.
Well, the, the three ninety-nine, five twenty-five is for five years completely, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so n- not every year or anything like that.
Well, it says payable over five years, one fifty-nine, eight-ten for the first year and seventy-nine, nine oh five.
I'm saying that we could probably do it in the full, the lump, and then if they, like you were talking about with the, the discount, they'd probably bring it down about. You're thinking twenty thousand, maybe?
Around there, if, if the, the business manager can work his magic with the quote people and we can inquire too about. You know, if it is paid in a lump sum, that five-year contract, do we get an even, even greater discount? I would hope so.
Like an extra year?
You know? An extra year maybe?
Maybe just tell them we wanna be at about three eighty.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, other discussion. Roll call vote then, Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Arthur? You know what you're voting for?
No, not at all.
You're gonna.
Do you want me to repeat it?
You repeat the motion and so she knows.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Arthur, um, Commissioner Marsh made the motion to accept the five-year contract with body worn cameras. And it would be, as of right now, three ninety-nine, five twenty-five, they're seeing if they do a five year, that it would. Maybe get down to three eighty and it would be paid from the twenty-twenty-one COVID funding.
Okay. Aye.
Okay, well, Chair votes aye motion carries. Also wanna take, thank you for coordinating that training you did the last couple of days and also to thank the criminals too that helped you.
I am sunburnt and I am sore and I'm not covered in as many, uh, pockmarks from the training rounds as. Uh, Mr. Cordnoy is, but no, we appreciate him coming out too, we, we couldn't do it without guys like him that take two days off of work. To come get shot at by the police, you know, it.
And the other ones that helped with it too, yeah. I think he took the most shots, so.
It, it went really good, we have lots of good video that we'll try to share with the commissioners.
Bigger target or the slower target?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jesse.
Okay, next one onto the road department. Al Heiser.
Good morning, everyone, I guess one item that, um, I know the last meeting. We had a agreement with Interstate Engineering, I don't know, Amanda wasn't quite done with it. I don't know if Jim's aware of if she's totally reviewed with that or not for signature for Dean. I guess we can. I think you made a motion last meeting too, after she reviewed it, we were just kinda wondering if it was done.
Yeah, I'll have to check with her.
Okay.
She's been out for.
Okay. Um, as far as the road department, we're hauling gravel northeast of Dickinson. Um, kinda shaping up some roads and we actually started. Picking up some of these gravel roads that are really rough shape, hauling water and shaping them, hopefully we'll get some rain here. This, uh, coming weekend so we can get some of our fall blading done. Um, working on some culverts. Todd and Gary have been really actively cleaning out culverts, replacing culverts this summer because it's really been dry, so that's really helped out. This past week here, we had a meeting in Bismarck along with the county commissioners convention, uh, Director, uh, Bill Panos is really. He's really optimistic about extra funding coming to the counties and, um. To the new bill, highway bill that is coming, if they ever get it out of Washington, and I think there's some. Something with the ARPA funding too that I think they're gonna go into session here in November to find out, so hopefully we'll get some. Funds out of there, so I think it's gonna be kind of a horse race, whoever's got a set of plans done to get some of these projects done. So I've got three engineering firms working on some projects for us and I won't, they can talk about them. Um, I guess, uh, other than that. We're crushing, uh, over by Taylor, we found a small deposit over there, when we get that done, then we're gonna move up. North to the Yager Pit and crush there till we get another pile up there. Um, other than that, then we got a few things on the. Agenda here and I'll also be here, I know I have Todd here, I know we got discussion on the speed, uh, reduction. I know Todd has got some, the, uh, speed study that we done on the screen, so when, I guess whenever you're, get up to that, we'll be here to discuss that. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
I don't see Mr. Spickel here, do you?
Believe so.
Alan, did you wanna say anything about that water tanker bid opening?
Oh, the wa- the water tank, we know, we had that one that we wrecked, that we rolled over, we took bids on it, um. We received three bids, one was fifteen hundred, one was three thousand twenty, I believe, and the other was, well, I guess you got it up there, forty-five hundred. So actually the way it played out is we took the insurance money. Twenty-five hundred and the deductible, so we ended up actually getting like seven thousand for the trailer and plus we stripped everything off that we needed off it, so. It was a wreck, which isn't a good thing, but it worked out pretty well in the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mr. Spickel's not here, they'll go into the next one, the speed reduction on Hundred Seventh Avenue Southwest. Is it Grant?
Good morning, uh, Grant Guion, first timer here, so that's fun. Um, good news is I'm not here to ask for money, uh, just, uh, ten seconds of time, so. Um, I think it's important, uh, to just say, you know, I'm local, I was born in Dickinson. Uh, raised in Regent, married a, a Montana girl, small town. Um, my wife and I never really thought we'd end up in Dickinson, uh, met in Bismarck and jumped into the oil field, uh, two thousand and six. On my first day, uh, in the job. Um, before all the construction and all that had happened on Highway twenty-two. Um, I was a passenger and we were going ninety miles an hour, uh, four-car pass, blind up a hill. Um, that was my first experience in the oil field, um, you fast forward. Fifteen, sixteen years, we put a lot of miles, um, unfortunately, I've, I've had to say goodbye to too many, uh, people. That, um, friends and family, uh, people that, uh. I'm sure we all can relate, you know, there's scars there, um. My wife was rear-ended in a, in a vehicle on Dickinson at a stoplight, uh, with my six-year-old daughter about three years ago. And the officer that did the, the follow-up on it. Uh, just casually said, hey, um, this is the third one that's happened today in the exact same spot. Um, that, that kinda stuff shouldn't happen, but it does happen, you know, um, but. I drive, um, my wife and I own a service company called Rig Anchors. So, um, we're responsible for keeping rigs from tipping over, you know, we cover all the way from, uh, down in the Baker area. All the way up to, you know, north of Williston, so. I've got to see the changes, um, we experience them every day, you know, my days start. Four in the morning and sometimes I'm getting home ten, eleven o'clock at night, so. I'm not a guy, um, that brings something like this just to. I'm not a guy, um, that brings something like this just to bring it. But, um, we're very thankful that the road got paved, uh, one hundred and seventh and thirty fifth, I think that's great. Um, I am all for truck drivers, I am all for, uh, families and community and, and living together. Um, the concern and why I came today is, uh, I would like to request that the speed limit on one hundred and seventh, um, traveling north from Old Highway ten, um, for a half a mile, so if you guys are familiar with that road, if you take Old Highway ten and you head north, if you're looking, you'll see kind of a little hill and then a bigger hill, um, you know? We're all aware that that road is different than thirty fifth, we've got loaded semis, you know, hundred and five thousand pounds heading north. Um, a lot of them will go Keel Deer, one hundred and twelfth down to one hundred and seventh, jump over to Richardson, come back loaded. Um, if we drove out there today, you would see the tire tracks, what's happening is when people are driving, they're popping over that hill, they don't even know, um, that there's, there's families, there's homes down there. They don't hit their brakes, they're swerving. Um, the reason I know this is I experienced it about six weeks ago. Um, I got a letter in the mail, it was my neighbor's, so I took it down to the mailbox. Uh, I was sitting there, semi came, popped over that hill. It's very, very dangerous, in my opinion, um, because right now we've got ideal conditions. Um, you know, North Dakota's big on vision zero, zero fatalities, um. When you, if you know anything about driving, if you got a hill and you're going downhill, um, you're going to slide, uh, and North Dakota DOT is, it'll tell you, hey, double your, your distance. If you drive at forty five, um, and I talked to Alan and Jeremy, the one that was responsible for setting the speed limit, it is designed for forty five mile an hour. Um, the reason I'm requesting the thirty five is simply to give the trucks enough space to stop and, and make that distance. We got about four hundred feet, um, from the top of my approach on top of the little hill down to our neighbors. And my calculations, um, it would slide into the second potentially, but every day, you know, I'm out there working in the yard or you, you can hear them coming. Um, and the thing I would encourage you is, you know, if you know the area, um, it's like, yeah, okay, well, we'll slow down because we know that somebody's there, but the guys that are in the trucks, this could be their first time, they're getting paid maybe by the load, not by the hour. There's an incentive to, hey, let's get it done. Some of those guys might be on their third load, heading north, you know, trying to get home at the end of the day and we're going into winter weather and we all know, uh, speed. Speed is really the biggest thing that, that kills, so, um, that's my, my request and my prayers that you guys would consider um, slowing down that first half to thirty five miles per hour. Um, it's ten seconds of time, you know?
Anybody have a question for Grant?
That, that just got paved this spring, right?
Yep, it's been a two year, kind of, they prepped it and then they paved it.
What was the speed limit on it before they paved it?
It was forty five, we used to have a, uh, a sign that said, watch children slow at play. Um, it's no longer, you can't put those up. Um, I will say this, if you drive thirty fifth, um, right in front of kind of Fluffy Fields, it's thirty five miles per hour, um, for a whole mile with the slow children at play sign. Um, then it goes to fifty five and then you turn south and you go, you know, forty five for that, that mile. Um, my understanding is they requested to get the thirty five mile per hour. Um, if you drive through there, their drop back and their setback isn't even close to how fast, um, or our distance, uh, where our approaches are. Um, I don't know if you're familiar with Halfley's, they've got kind of like an old milk barn, um, that got recovered. And that's sitting, I don't know, fifteen feet off the road and then all the approaches are right there, but it's, like I said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bring it, um, I've seen too many, too many things happen. And I don't feel right not bringing it to you guys' attention. And I understand everybody's in a hurry and everybody wants to get there, but ten seconds is not worth somebody's life.
Any other questions?
Chairman, um, do you think that a lot of this travels because of the construction in town and that we'll slow down once that is done?
Nope, I, I don't, um, you know, a lot of the, the semis are, are taking a left, not a right, you know, when they're, um, I think we're getting a lot of traffic that way. Um, I'm not against the traffic part of it, you know, I think anytime you pave a road, um, you're going to get increased traffic and I know a lot of people that are very thankful because, hey, I can bypass, but I don't see our, our traffic dropping. The other thing is, is you guys have all been here, boom on, boom off, stuff changes. Um, you know, right now we're not boom on, so it, uh, it can change quick and so you want to have it in place. So you're not reacting, so I'm not coming back and we're saying, hey, we coulda, shoulda, woulda.
I've had calls on this also that they're opposed and since it is the pavement, they wanted to leave it in that area where they live.
Yep.
They want to leave it at forty five, so I've had four calls that they're adamant about leaving it, so, but I understand your point also.
You have the, you're the first property north of Ridgeview Estates?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yep, you go a quarter mile north on one hundred and seventh, you'll see some old bridge poles. Um, we're right there.
Okay.
Okay, I think Todd Miller had some, do you have some information on traffic counts or anything there? Right.
Morning. My name's Todd Miller, I'm road operations specialist for people here that don't know me, I'm sure you all do. Um, but anyway, on one oh seven regards to one hundred and seventh, uh, the vehicles that we had out there, we did a traffic count, uh, survey with, uh, counters, traffic counters using the air operated traffic counters. Um, we had four thousand eight hundred and fourteen vehicles per day and that was between the time of June twenty ninth and July seventh. Um, the maximum speed we had on that road was ninety three point one miles per hour. The, um, minimum was eight point nine miles per hour and the me, uh, medium speed on that road is, uh, fifty point three miles per hour. So, um, I have it also broken down into different, uh, if we, who's operating, can you go to the next, to where it says speeds, but speed statistics by hour, this is the Fluffy Fields area. We're also, uh, there's this one oh seven, this is one oh seven, okay, scroll up if you could. Is there any way of scrolling it or?
No.
No? Great, so anyway, I'll just have to ad lib here and without using those, uh, statistics. Um, to answer, I mean, the speed is up high, is, is, you know, it's at fifty miles per hour above, you know, five miles an hour above forty five. Um, so I don't know if whatever, I mean, those are the statistics I have, um, I don't, if you want any, like, if you need anything else, like what type of vehicles we're traveling there out of those four thousand, I can get to you those, but for right now is what I have told you is what I have in front of me here, so I can't really show anything else because the slides aren't.
Any information on truck traffic at all or?
I do, I mean, I can get that, but I don't have it with me. I just was told about the speeds, so.
Mr. Ian, you were looking at the first half mile, you're talking about reducing the speed rate, you're not, you're not about the whole mile, right?
Yep, so if you're, if you're traveling south, you got a good line of sight when you're coming over that hill and you got plenty of time, you know, to slow down. If you're traveling north off of Old Highway ten, it's, you're blind unless you know the area.
Okay.
And at, at fifty mile an hour average speed, um, your stopping distance is going to be over four hundred, probably four hundred and fifty feet and we got four hundred feet to work with. The other thing to keep in mind is you say, hey, who is driving eight miles an hour? If you look at where that was placed, um, on the approach, Halfley's approach, where you take a right, if they were going to Walmart or past Fluffy Fields, they're going to take a right, so I actually think it might even be a higher number than that, but it's still, you know?
Any other, any questions? Okay.
I, I have a question for.
Yes, go ahead.
In, in your best judgment, Todd, because you've been doing this for a lot of years, um, do you, uh, do you see any downside to reducing that to thirty five for that particular half mile?
I do not, um, reason being is, uh, I, I have to concur with what he has said, I mean, safety is our first priority out there, so, I mean, anywhere. And, um,
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I would think thirty five would be reasonable for that area, um, in my opinion, but.
Yeah, just one other comment, uh, I don't care how many speed limit signs you put out there. Um, people are going to drive the way they drive, but, um, I'm in favor and I'll make a motion to reduce that speed on that area that we're visiting about to thirty five.
For the first half mile off Old Ten, you're telling, okay, motion, have a second. Have a second?
I have a question.
Yep.
If, if, when it's appropriate to ask.
Okay, I need a second first before we can discuss it, it's really. I'll second it for discussion then.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I guess, uh, two things, number one, uh, from a, uh, road standpoint, can you enforce and how effective are you when you've got thirty five going in one lane and forty five going in the other, is that, is that a doable? Um, situation? Is, is that what you're, you want thirty five both ways?
Yes, for that half.
You mentioned that it's easy going south, but tough going north, and so I, I thought you were proposing.
No, it'd be thirty five, um, for that half mile going both ways.
Chair, chair, if you have any comment on this, since you're going to have to enforce it.
Um, I guess I'm in agreement with him, if you want my opinion, I, I take that road all the time because I don't want to sit at that light at that road construction for ten minutes, but, um, it, it's, personally, I haven't seen a lot of violators in the area that you're talking about, it's more so down the road further, but, uh, if it's happening down the road further, it's going to happen there too eventually, so I'm just not catching them at, at that time, but, um, yeah, I, I think it's fair.
Okay.
I think that this is something that should, I mean, I'm all about safety, but I really think that, and a lot of the people that have called me said that this increased traffic is due because of the construction. And I think, I mean, once we pave something for somebody, I mean, I don't know where we do thirty five on pavement, pavement.
Um, we'd do it on Thirty Fifth Street by Fluffy Fields, uh, the same road that was paved for a whole mile.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Like he said, there is a hill there with a residential area, I, I think it's very fair, uh, in winter conditions when that's icy. It's a new problem.
I'm quite familiar with the area too and there is a lot of truck traffic, they go to the, to the southwest green, they use that route there quite a bit from the north.
Mr. Chairman, just to, I, I would prefer we err on the side of safety.
Okay.
How, so how long, how long is this pavement, you said a mile?
It's a mile, one mile, the intersection where the road goes over to Fluffy Fields, Thirty Fifth.
So we're going to do a half a mile at thirty five and a half a mile at forty five?
Right.
Uh, what I, what I would suggest to do is, is if we're going to switch to thirty five, I would put thirty five for the half a mile and I'd kick it back up to fifty five because there's nobody that lives there. Then you don't have a thirty five or forty five because state law is fifty five. And so when you would change that, it would, then that would end when it gets to Highway ten, so I would just put thirty five if that's what you choose to do for the first half a mile and we'd put a fifty five up beyond that and they'd be back up to speed because once they go through the intersection, that is a stop intersection, so they'd be fifty five up to the thirty five and then down to thirty five.
So they could make up that time you're on.
Wait, your primary concern is the trucks, correct? Primarily?
Yeah, you know, everybody, everybody wants to victimize the truck driver, but, you know, some of these accidents where you get somebody who's young that got killed, um, the, the truck never had a chance, he did everything he possibly could to stop and so you take an out of state driver who doesn't know the area, who's hauling frac sand, come and popping over that hill. You know, it's, it's not, I've seen it too many times.
Okay, so I guess I'd ask, Mr. Zander, you want to amend your motion to change it to fifty five, then the north half mile or?
Can I ask a question, not to interrupt? Um, so when you're traveling north, Al, you'd know this, but, so it'd go thirty five for half and then you're proposing, hey, it would go to fifty five. When you hit that gravel and head north and continue, is that fifty five or that would be forty five?
Fifty five.
That is fifty five, that gravel, okay.
Mr. Zander, you want to amend yours or do you want to leave it as it was?
Yeah, I, I don't see that as a obstacle.
Okay, I agree with that since I seconded, any other discussion?
I guess I'd like to see what happens on the stream when this road is done, but whoever we vote, we vote.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. or Commissioner Marsh, I think that once we, I would like to see also, once the construction was, like I said, I'm all about safety, but I would like to see the drop in traffic once construction is done.
Same respect, though, people that live there probably have a habit of speeding there because they live there, you know? And so once traffic diminishes, if it diminishes, they're probably still have the same, same habit.
Well, you kind of did the same thing over on Highway ten east of town where for a period of time, you, you kind of had a, uh, a field for forty five and now you've moved everything, you got forty five for trucks, fifty five for vehicles and then you uh, kind of figured out that that was not a big issue and so the inconsistency you were, so now you've moved consistently to fifty five, is that correct?
That's correct. Like I said, it's, it's thirty five by Fluffy Field, so it shouldn't be treated any different as, in front of these other residents, so. And then we, once we got past the residue, kicked her up to fifty five.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote then, Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
I vote aye, Commissioner Marsh?
So I'll vote, I'll vote aye.
Commissioner Arthur?
With the fact of looking at it again next spring, aye.
Commissioner Zan, or Messer, Messer? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see. Do you know, Al, have you heard anything, Mr. Spickle, is he going to be here today or?
I have not talked to him, he stopped at the shop here a week or so ago and, and he said he was on the agenda, so I'm kind of surprised that he is not here, so.
Okay, I guess we'll leave it till later then, next we'll go to Highland Engineering.
Good morning, Mike Ness with Highlands Engineering.
Morning.
Couple of projects I'm working on, uh, bridge replacement, uh, north of Richardson. That, that project is on hold, we have plans pretty much completed on that, uh, pending federal highway funding. The next bridge replacement is, uh, southeast of Richardson on Eightieth Avenue Southwest. Um, in anticipation of, of, of some, the infrastructure bill that Al talked about, that, uh, we're, we're getting going on those plans and getting those shelf ready for next year's construction. We've got the wetland delineation survey completed, the preliminary topo survey and the cultural resource surveys all done on that, so we can, all the stuff that's, needs to be done before winter's done, so we can proceed with design. Uh, also working with Al and his staff on the TA application, a transportation alternatives application for a multi-use trail, we haven't really got to meet on that too much, we're sort of kind of at the preliminary stages. Uh, that's for twenty twenty five construction, but the applications do at the end of this year for twenty twenty five, so. We're looking at a couple of options, might have to do some coordination with the city of Dickinson to tie on to their, their planned, uh, trail. Might have to do some coordination with the City of Dickinson to tie on to their their planned trail, comprehensive plan. So. And then we're also looking at some safety improvements at the intersection, one hundred and sixteenth Avenue Southwest and Highway ten, which is right at Martin Construction. There's been some incidents last few years and did propose a few changes, additions to Al. We haven't got to meet on that yet and discuss it. But but we're in the process to looking into some improvements, specifically the southbound. People coming by Martin. There's a hill there and it sounds like there's, that's mostly where the problem is. So, but.
We have yet to discuss.
It's right in front of Martin Construction Shop. There's kind of a little bit of hill. They beeline over. We've had three pretty serious wrecks there. We've taken the stop sign out on both sides. We've put rumble strips up. We've got stop ahead, flashing stop ahead, flashing signs. I don't know what with that intersection. But it's, I'm just afraid someday we might have something worse than just a fender bender. We've actually had vehicles hit, tipped and rolled in the ditch by crossing through. So that's why I got Mike to take a look at some, maybe some more signage or some flashing signs or something to kind of hopefully avoid some of the issues that's going on there. I think they get off the interstate and they get on this nice road and they just hammer down. They come over the hill and whoa. So anyway, thanks.
Could we put speed bumps on there?
Yep, there is.
There is speed bumps in there. I rumble strips.
I'm saying bumps.
Full bumps, yeah, okay.
On top of the hill right there and then, you know, if they hit it, they're gonna slow down and.
It works really well unless you're on a motorcycle.
Well, then you slow down.
Yeah.
So, but it is a wide road all the way from interstate. So I think people look at it as, you know, a higher speed road and.
What is the speed limit?
It's only forty five and the only forty five mile an hour sign is right off interstate. So, you know, along with maybe adding another one halfway down. And then maybe, you know, I proposed a few changes, moving the stop ahead sign, maybe getting more flashers and stuff like that. But we still gotta discuss that.
The problems we had is that people from out of the area or is it local people that are causing this?
Sounds like the last one was a local that works at the refinery.
I think the last one was local, but when they, we've had quite a bit when when they were building refinery, because I think there's a lot of not familiar with the intersection, but it's still continued to happen.
I requested a crash report too from the DOT. I haven't got yet, so.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay, thanks. Next we go to Northern Plains.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Uh, just a few brief updates. Thirtieth Street, the bridge replacement on the county line, Martin Construction started on that late last week. They are tentatively looking at setting the box around October twentieth. So right now that road is closed. We let emergency manager management know. But that road is closed, but it'll be closed for the next two to two and a half weeks. So hopefully by the end of the month, it'll be open, probably be around the twenty fifth is what my guess would be. But that project is finally off and running. Other project that should be done this fall yet is a couple of bridge replacements in the Bellfield area. One on Hundred Twenty Seventh, one is on Hundred Thirty First. The update as of last week was construction was gonna start next week. That has been pushed back a week. They're looking at starting the week of eighteenth, October eighteenth. We're having a pre-construction meeting the fourteenth, but that's what you see on the screen is is has been updated, so everything got pushed back a week for that project. Couple of design projects, Eighty Third and Eighty Sixth Avenue, kind of in the south of Richardson area, down by the Mesa Ranch. Conlins, Gabarts, and I think there's a Coons that lives down there. That has actually been updated too. At one time, we had everything planned for the November bid opening through the DOT. Learned on Tuesday that that got pushed to February. It's not gonna affect the construction date at all. But apparently the DOT ran out of funding for the November bid opening. So they pushed that one to February bid opening, but everything else is is done. It's ready for that bid opening. And then last but not least, another newer project that's also in the Bellfield area, Hundred Twenty Seventh and Hundred Thirty First. Just got that about a month ago. We've completed the the survey, got the wetland surveys done. We're in the process of getting the ARKE survey done. So I think we're moving as fast as we can, as fast as the regulatory agency will will allow us. We're hoping for probably a March or an April bid opening through the DOT, through a DOT funding process for construction next year. Okay, and that was really about it. I guess I did have an update about the Association of Counties meeting. I think Al kind of hit on on the funding situation, so I don't really have much to add to that. But I'll answer any questions from the Commission if you have any.
Any questions? Nope. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to K L J.
Hi, good morning. Andrew Krebs with K L J here to give you a brief update. So our first project with Schwartz Construction, that's Taylor Road Box. That one is complete. We've been working on the project final and about done with it. We're just waiting on some final paperwork from them in order to get the final estimate done and then turn that into the DOT for review. The second project, wetland mitigation monitoring, we did get those reports done and we submitted them to the Corps. So we're just waiting on a response back from them. And then we have the monitoring again scheduled for next year. Is there any question?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next we go to County Agent Kurt Frelick.
Morning Commissioners. Kurt Frelick, NDSU Extension Agent for Stark Billings County, here on County Policy to request out of state travel to accompany my, the four H meets judging team to the national meets four H contest. Tuesday, October twenty ninth, Manhattan, Kansas, Kansas State University. Those students also get to go over to Kansas City to the American Royal, where they're going to have the awards program for those students. The the trip is going to entitle stops at North Dakota State University to work out at NDSU's meats lab. South Dakota State University is their meats lab. I did get clearance. I have not received the official documentation, but I can get these young people into Nebraska Beef Beef Processing Plant in Omaha, Nebraska. Been in there. It's quite an experience. Not everybody gets to walk into those facilities. From there, we go to the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, have a workout at in in Lincoln at the University of Nebraska, and then down to Manhattan, down to Kansas State. So no cost to the county. The kids raised all the money to pay for hotel rooms, vehicles, meals, everything. But it's just still a formal process to request that out of state travel.
So is this a competition they're gonna be doing?
Yes, national contest.
Good, that's cool.
Seven students going from, students from that attend Dickinson or, excuse me, New England High School, South Heart High School. And I've got one student that did graduate and is a student at Dickinson State University. So.
Amazing. Mr. Zander.
I I will make a motion to approve the out of state travel request as Mr. Frelick has stated.
I'll second that.
Your motion is second.
Can I also say that those four H kids and the work that you guys do with them and the the time that they put into their events is really gratifying and it it's a great program and takes leadership, leadership to keep it going. So congratulations. I'm sure your kids are gonna do great at nationals they have in the past.
We'll see. Hopefully.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guess we gotta schedule a break here because apparently I don't give enough breaks. We'll go fifteen minute break.
Of Excellence Award, Julie Obregich.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
My name is Julie Obregich. We had another awards presentation for a very deserving gal in Bellfield on August 23rd at the Bellfield American Legion Hall. We had about 65 attendees. It was very well attended. I want to thank Commissioner Franchuk and also Commissioner Arthad for attending. The recipient was Ruthie Johnson, and I have a video here that we'll play and then we'll just chat about it afterwards.
We're here to honor Ruth for all that you do.
Ruth Johnson of Bellfield is not to be seen wearing a shirt that proclaims "Live generously", and she does. She gives tirelessly of her time and talents on her own and through numerous volunteer activities, namely at the Bellfield Senior Center where she currently serves as Secretary. Ruth has voluntarily led an exercise group twice a week for many years. She has sewn wall hangings and table coverings for monthly themes at the senior center. She has painted interior walls, all voluntarily. There are numerous contributions she has made. Ruth offers a positive outlook, always welcoming people with heartfelt concern for everyone around her. Ruth is involved with other volunteer groups as well, namely the American Legion Auxiliary and the Sports Meet Club, where she volunteers at the shooting ranges on the... amongst other activities, where she gives tirelessly of her time and talents as well.
We are all in awe of what you do, and this community is blessed with your generosity every day, so thank you.
We can do our exercising right now.
It's nice to be here, up and down and left and right.
Most of the time when I ask Ruth, she'll always say, "Oh, I can do this," or "I can do that." And she usually ends with, "Whatever you want, just tell me, I will..."
She's probably either an exercise club bone builder, and then she also leads crafts, and is always running to help. Whenever you mention anything that needs to be done, she's running to volunteer to take on projects.
You know, when we started, like, nine, 10 years that we worked together as Ruth was a secretary, membership grew probably 1,000%. We wanted to be paid, and when we knew it was getting to be a good she wouldn't have none of that. No, I can't, I'm not good. We had a ladies' site that started by Bumper and Barb, but Ruth jumped out there with her laptop and showed people how to sight, how to handle, and save, and all that kind of... She's very instrumental.
I rely on Ruth so heavily for so many pieces of what we do. Now, she brings a lot to our organization, wit and humor, but she also brings spreadsheets, and that's a very important thing. She keeps everything organized for us.
We all be at book club, and somebody will say, "Oh, there was this character who said or did this." And she said, "Yes." And she turns right to the page and reads it. She knows it, even if it's a book she read a year ago. She brings so much background. She can remember books and quotes from many, many years ago, but best of all, she makes us laugh.
I just can't believe how she finds time to do all that she does. Just amazes me. She prays for illness. She prays for healthiness. She prays for people unemployed, people employed. She prays for rain. I think she prays for snow.
In the six and a half years I was in the Marines, we moved permanent change of stations six times. Ruthie never complained. Then I got into the somewhat interesting work of being a Marine helicopter pilot, and I know it was a worry for all of the Marines. She never complained. When I got out of the Marine Corps, we started farming and ranching with its risks and hazards. She never complained. I got into truck driving, and I would be gone anywhere from five to 17 days at a time. She never complained. I got into law enforcement and same-time EMS, emergency medical assistance, with its risks and hazards. She never complained. We're looking at a one-person complete support network, and for all what we've been through, Ruthie, thank you very much. I couldn't have honored without you.
You know, God gave me a tremendous amount of talent and ability when I was born, through no worth of my own, it was just given. I think Mom wanted to make sure that I turned out to be a decent human being, and I think she probably told me maybe 500 times, or 700, or 1,000, if God... You've been given a lot, and people who are given a lot, much is expected of them. And I think she drilled that into me from the top of my head to the bottom of my feet, and that is how I have tried to live my life, thinking, "God gave me this to use, it's my job to use it." Teaching was one of the greatest joys of my life. I love people, and I love being here, and I love... You know, I was raised by a magnificent mother and father, and they lived through the Depression, and they taught us values and ethics, and how to work, and how to be, and how to treat other people. And I was fortunate enough to win the husband lottery and have a husband whom I've lived for 51 years, and as a matter of fact, he doesn't complain either. So we've had more fun together than is probably even legal, I'm not sure.
It was because of the awesome things that you do for the community, selflessly, my God, that led the mayors to select you out of, again, 34 submitted nominations. If it wasn't for Ruth Johnson and her generosity, the town of Bellfield would not be what it is. She certainly displays a spirit of excellence continuously.
Ruthie is quite a gal. I had not met her prior to the presentation, and, you know, it's funny because even before I got to the presentation, it was almost as if I had known her, just because of everything that everyone had said about her was just so positive. I had one person tell me in particular, "She's just so nice, you don't even want to fight with her." And honestly, and like I mentioned this at the presentation, but, you know, I didn't know that people like that still existed, so congratulations to Ruthie Johnson, just an amazing person. I do want to mention that the next deadline for the awards submissions will be October 15th, which is coming up very, very quickly. The categories, again, are leadership, customer service, innovation, stewardship, and also Good Samaritan, Random Acts of Kindness. As mentioned in the video, we did have 34 submitted nominations, so we've been getting a great number of people, a lot of really good people in the county, so it's wonderful to be able to recognize them in this manner. So I appreciate you letting me come and do this every time we have the awards presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate you doing it, too. Do anybody ever resubmit people?
We have had resubmissions. There's... It's happened a few times, but if it's the same nomination, you know, we only use the one time. There have been times where we've gotten submissions from out of the county, which it's too bad because they're really good submissions, but this is a Stark County program, so it does include only Stark County residents. So unfortunately, those have had to be, you know, kicked out, but, yeah, it's a nice selection of nominations every time. Again, the mayors review them in blind format. It is not a popularity contest. It is based off of the deeds that were done rather than who did it. So, yeah, it's been very, it's been very positive.
Good, you know, it's amazing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The mayor's made an excellent choice there, and I also appreciate all the work you've done in to come up with this program. It's great. Okay. Next we go to the Manufacturing Day Resolution, Fisher Industries.
Well, good morning Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be here. We're passing out a little brochure just so you can kind of see what we're kind of talking about for this weekend. We have a resolution for you.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Kurt Kittleson. With me today is, I'm sitting in the back, is Bob Larson and Eric Kittleson. We're representing the Southwest North Dakota Manufacturers. Every year, the National Association of Manufacturers has a day that they put on and that they call it National Manufacturing Day. The National Manufacturing Day was last Friday, October 1st, but in North... And around the Dickinson area, we have a very active organization, really promoting manufacturing around the Southwest North Dakota, but even throughout the whole state of North Dakota. And as you can see in the resolution, there's 1,200 companies around North Dakota that employ, you know, approximately 26,000 people with very well high-paid jobs. And so we, what we like to do in Southwest North Dakota is we have an organization that we call Dream It, Do It. It's a part of it where we reach out to area high schools, through the colleges, and we promote manufacturing. And so next Wednesday, October 13th, and you have a brochure, we have what we call a Manufacturing Day at the BAC, and we invite the area high schools, and at this point right now, we have over 750 students registered to come and see the, attend the event. It's a great way for us to get out, reach out to the communities around Southwest North Dakota, promoting manufacturing, seeing the companies that are in Southwest North Dakota that are manufacturing, and again, providing good, high-quality jobs, well-paid. And so we also have some of the local, or the area colleges coming. Dickinson State will be there, Dismarck State, the State School of Science in Wappin, and the NSU will be there. And we are looking forward to having this opportunity to bring people, and hopefully the weather will hold out and we'll have nice weather, we can get everybody there this year. But we would, surely, we wanted to thank you for the resolution and have you, ask you for your signature on it and helping support us. We'd also really like to encourage you to come and attend it next week and just see. The area manufacturers will all be there, promoting our companies, but also promoting the whole organization, manufacturing as a whole. So we just wanted to come before you, thanking you for taking the time to look at our resolution and supporting us, and make it, offer for you to join us next week. So if you have any questions, I'd truly like to try to answer them.
Any questions from the board? Nope. Okay. Then I look for a motion to approve the resolution proclaiming October 13, 2020, as a Manufacturing Day in Stark County.
Just a comment. I've attended a couple of your presentations in past years, and I would encourage all of my fellow commissioners to stop in and take in the information, but I'd also offer a motion to authorize Chairman Franchuk to sign resolution number, I don't know what the number is, because it...
I don't either.
You know what I'm referring to in my motion then?
Okay. A motion to approve the resolution claiming October 13, 2021, as a Manufacturing Day in Stark County. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Please, Lee says, Jason here yet, or not yet? So you want to wait then, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Karen, you had the delinquent property tax sale pricing?
So yesterday I sent out a copy of all these, and then the long sheet, if you guys want to pull those out. Carla, I gave it to you yesterday. Okay, so we have a list of the properties. We have 2020 delinquent properties, and then at the bottom is the portion that did not sell, and we need to... These are the proposed repricing of those properties. Is Nat here? Is Natalie here? Natalie, do you want to come up? I'm assuming there's going to be questions about some of these properties. I also sent out yesterday kind of pictures and explanations and a couple of things that me and Natalie discussed. Down here at the bottom where it's talking about the lots in Taylor, Natalie had contacted the city and a chunk of them are in the, you said, the right, kind of the.
They're in the road right-of-way for that highway. When I talked to her, she said that the city won't even issue a building permit on them lots because they're not buildable lots. So I don't know what needs to happen with them. If they just need to be vacated from the plat or if they, I mean, I don't know. But they're not really even sellable. There is a portion of each one, but if the city's not going to let you build on it, who wants just a piece of land that you can't do anything with? So.
And you said the city didn't want to buy them either.
No. They've been on there since last year and the city doesn't want them because like they said, they can't build on them.
Natalie, do you have a recommendation or any thoughts on where we should go with those?
I, I really don't know. I mean, I think that something needs to be done by the city to maybe just take the lots completely, you know, vacate that part of, portion of the plat. Because some of it is highway right-of-way.
Yeah.
And then the other part of it, the way she explained it is kind of swamp or alkali or, so to build it, you're going to have to, I mean.
Are there any structures on any of those lots?
Nope. Did you get the pictures that I sent, the Taylor pictures?
Yeah. I'm asking the question for the audience.
It's, it's south of the new subdivision in Taylor, but it's right along Highway 10 and it's in a lower area. And like I said, when I talked to the auditor last year, she just said that the city won't even issue a permit to build or anything.
I'm just going to offer a suggestion that you work with our state's attorney and come up with a plan for those as far as what legally we, our options are on that, Jim? If you're following me?
I am.
Okay. I, I'm familiar with the property and, you know, I can't imagine anybody wanting to buy it for the purpose of building it now. Now you're telling me that the city is not going to allow permits to build anyhow.
Correct.
So it seems like it's, it's time we get this stuff off the books.
I agree. I don't believe so. It's just vacant land, but it's, it's just not buildable land.
Do we have anybody across the street, adjacent property owner that it would be advantageous for them to? I'm trying to look it up here right now.
Well, it butts right up to that Prairie East, is it Prairie East subdivision?
Yeah.
You know, it's everything south of Prairie East to Highway 10.
And it's across the road. It's in, actually, right?
No, it's on the north side of Highway 10.
Yes, but it's the, where the development is, it's, it's to the south of that, but.
Right.
Are you, are you talking about the, the cropland to the east or the property south to that trailer corridor mobile home thing?
Well, it's to the east of the, the mobile home. Did you get the pictures? I think.
But I think there was property, we had, there was a, right south of that mobile home park, right?
This is what I'll show. You guys can pass this around. So basically, I should have gave these to Mike to put on there. So there is, this is where that row of little trailer houses are that they put. This up here is Prairie East, but they haven't developed it yet. So it's everything south of there pretty much. There's a couple lots in there that don't actually fall under that piece, but you know, all I know is the city has said that they will not do a building permit. So basically, it's everything south of Prairie East, directly south to Highway 10.
There is some property south of that mobile home thing too, that's why I was asking.
This one here?
Right.
Well, I think that's right-of-way too, most of it. I mean, it's not drawn in that way. It's never been changed from when Highway 10 went in there. But I'm sure that's why the city won't, you know, because it's going to be right up against Highway 10 then, the little piece that you could actually probably build on.
Can, yes. Who's currently, or maybe y'all knows, are we maintaining that, mowing, mowing weeds or anything? Or is the city taking care of that?
Or someone's farming that property as I was.
I think it, well, I don't know, is it armed or aid? Maybe?
It could be aid.
It might be aid, I'm not.
Someone's cut hay or somebody, they've worked on it.
If somebody's farming it, somebody's paying somebody for the.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Ms. Wanley, did you see, sent us pictures or just the?
I sent out pictures yesterday.
She sent, yeah, the property record cards for the ones that had houses on them so that you could see what the houses actually looked like. And then I did a, a map of the Taylor ones so that you guys would have an idea of what was actually, you know, what.
Are we required to take action on each and every one of these today? Or can we?
The public hearing is the first Tuesday in November to sell them. So you need to set a sale price on them so that we know what needs to be sold. I mean, if the county decides they're not going to do anything with them, that's fine. We just won't, you know, we can just research them further, but especially them, because they were delinquent property from last year. So they've already been sitting for a year. The ones up top, you know, them are all new this year for the taxes haven't been paid on them. And Neil and I discussed this morning, the two drainage ditch ones in Prairie Can, or Painted Canyon Estates. The city has taken the value completely off of them, so the only thing that's owing is specials. They're not the same thing. So I don't think, well, Neil said there might be a chance that them lots might sell at some point, but.
Well, yeah, so there's basically, when you do a development, you have to do the stormwater retention ponds. And there's been a significant change over the last 10 years in regards to rules on stormwater retention. And in certain areas, they are working to get to a point where the potential would be that you could extract that area or revert it from stormwater retention to an actual usable lot. I'm not saying that's going to happen immediately, but today they have no value, but potentially somewhere down the road they might. And, and there's going to be others, I know in this area that fall under that same category.
So between now and the first Tuesday of November, if the owners decide to pay the taxes, are not them, they come off of this or how does that work?
I've already done the deed transfer. We are now the owners of these properties.
Is there a redemption period now or is that expired?
I think that is probably, I suspect if someone walked in with the taxes, we could probably make a way to figure out a way to get them off.
With the Painted, I mean, the homeowners association with those developments, they don't do anything in those?
In regards to?
Like with Painted Canyon?
Well, the, the developers in charge of putting in the retention ponds, they are owned by the developer until a situation like this where they go back.
Right. And there's always been a value on it, a lot value also, where once Joe did the research and realized that they were designated as a drainage, you know, then he took the value off. But the city also assigned city special assessments to it. That's what's owing against them right now and the developer's not going to pay them. I think on both of them, it's over $3,000. One's almost $3,600 and the other one's right at $3,000 for a lot that they can't do anything with. So they just don't pay them and then the county gets them back.
So I'm going to go back to the one in Taylor. So the, the city won't even issue anything with access to that Chestnut Boulevard or Chestnut Street or whatever it is? If you, if you put all those lots into one tract, they would have, have the ability to have access to Chestnut. Is that also not an option if they put all those in one tract?
That I don't, the, all the information that I got was just that, you know, part of it was right-of-way. So the city is basically took them off their books or not really took them off their books, but just won't issue a building permit on it, so.
Okay, I might have it wrong. One, one through 15, 17, and 18. Okay.
Yeah, there's two different sheets that are highlighted.
Yep, got it.
But they are, could be all one piece for sure.
Well, I, I think, you know, is to, to solve the immediate need for you is to establish value, I think you could certainly do that. The new legislation that's out there gives us more flexibility, not less flexibility in regarding to adjusting that price during, during the calendar year rather than only once a year.
Compared to last year, yes.
Right. So I, I would be okay with that for the, for the purpose of the November sale. And then we can take a look at some of these and see if we need.
And one thing I was going to mention, on them drainage ditch ones, I think Pam had contacted you, right? And you said a minimum $10 just so that there's something on there? So I mean, we could make that $10 if somebody wants to buy that drainage ditch, I guess they can, but it's, I think what usually ends up happening is once the county gets them back, then we just end up making them exempt property. The city doesn't, you know, they basically don't get the money for the specials, so they redistribute them throughout the rest of the subdivision. And the county just makes them an exempt property, just like our parks or anything else that's put into a subdivision that has to be part of the plat but is not a sellable lot.
Now, the property, the property on Richardson, the 122nd Street North, Richardson, that home has been torn down, no, that's been removed.
Yeah. And the value that I have on that 5,100 is what the lot value is over in, in Richardson for them lots. I had taken the, the structure value completely off of there because I figured it was going to take more to tear it down then. So you guys might want to adjust to include your cost of what it costs you to tear that down. I mean, now that it's a buildable lot, add the 18,000 or whatever it was to it to, to get it tore down and maybe you can sell it for that. Maybe somebody, it's two lots, I think, yeah, 17 and 18. So it's 50 by 140, so it would be a buildable lot.
So we're, we're going to need some sort of motion to, or changes in prices depending on what the commission wants to do. Are we, are you accepting the prices as offered? Because we have to have a decision on that today.
And all these properties are?
Correct. Yep.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, we accept the proposed sales price on the first, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. The original plat of 45, 4th Street East through 412, 2nd Street Northeast, the recommendation of the assessor.
And did you, excuse me, do you want to put $10 on them drainage ditch ones or do you just want to leave them at zero?
Well.
That was the suggestion of the state's attorney, just so that there's some value on there?
Yeah.
I mean, more than likely they're not going to.
To include the $10.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second? Any other discussion? Roll call vote and Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Arthod?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And the bottom property?
So just a quick question, are we moving those into the same timeframe or can we reassess those monthly? I know the first ones, there's a statutory requirement to do. The bottom ones, we could potentially make some adjustments to.
That's a question for Karen. I really don't know what happens.
What did you?
Property on the bottom you was talking about.
Yeah, the, the, the six properties on the lower level.
That Stark County already owns.
That we already own. Do we need to do, we have the ability to do something with those at any time we wish.
You said the legislation just changed on that, correct? Before it was once a year.
Yes. And now you can do it whenever you want.
Well, then.
You have to, you have to publish it, but, I mean, I have no issues with the new recommended values. The only one I would question would be the one on 423 Dupont Street because that's not a buildable lot. We have one buyer who can buy that and that's the adjacent property owner and that's it. So I, I think the lot value, if it was all by itself would be, I, I agree with your number, but since it's all alone, I think we're kind of.
Do you want to propose a new value for that?
I'd have to think about it, but it's, it's, I'm, I'm fine with leaving it at 13 too, but I just don't know if that's exactly where, where it is, so.
And then what about the one in Richardson where they just tore the house down? Do you guys want to add to try and recoup some of your costs for tearing that house down or you, I mean?
It'd be nice, but I don't.
I don't see it happening.
Good luck.
I don't.
I don't know.
We don't have a lot of vacant lot sales in Richardson because I looked to see if I could find something that, you know, that had recently sold that we would be able to compare, but there really wasn't anything out there.
What did we have in the tear down on that, about 15? Be nice to recoup half of it.
I'd.
I think we're just going to sit on it then.
There's, the neighbor is probably interested, but I don't know what he's willing to pay for it.
Chairman, couldn't we just put half on it and see what happened?
That would work.
You're saying 9,000?
Mm-hmm.
So what value did you want that to be at, Commissioner Arthod?
9,000, please.
Which one?
The one in Richardson, 122nd Street North.
It's the third from the top on that bottom section. And I think like Neil said, these can, I mean, if you guys want these to go at the auction in the, in November to see if we can even get something, but I think you can adjust these at any time and try and do a sale once a month or advertise them in the paper or however you want to do to, do it to get rid of them. They're not under the restrictions like the top ones are.
Mr. Hope, do I need a motion on that to change that value?
Either that or the original person that made the motion could amend it accordingly.
Okay.
Well, they, they just approved the top ones, not the bottom ones. So we kind of need another motion if, I don't know if you want to put these in the November bidding, I think is what Natalie is saying. And so the bottom ones, if you prove those values, they could go in the November bidding and then if they don't sell, then you could further advertise them, correct?
If you have it, Mr. Messer, lots of flexibility now. Vote for clarity purposes, it'd be good for you to make your motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we amend 122nd Street North in Richardson from $5,100 to $9,000.
Have a second?
And then accept all the other values?
And accept all the other values.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Does that take care of that?
Yep.
Okay. Next, we got a report appointment application. We've had two applicants on that and we had this last month. It's Rebecca Vogel has applied for it and Tom Wykoff. We need to decide who we're going to appoint to the report. Both of them are currently employees of bank locally. Look for a motion to approve one of these.
Neither one is currently on the board.
No, they'd be new appointments. The one they're filling in is he retired, he no longer wants to be on the board. No, they'd be new appointments. The one they're filling in is he retired, he no longer wants to be on the board.
I'd make a motion to accept, uh, Mr. Wykoff.
Okay, I have a motion to appoint Tom Wykoff to the report, to have a second.
I'll second that.
Have a second, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Arthod.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay. Mr. Bedoin.
Now, Dave Bedoin, I'm making a presentation, Solar Cycle Twenty-Five. Good morning, county commissioners.
Morning.
Set my watch clock here. Get my ten minutes in. I'll, I'll watch that one. Today I'm here, um, thinking about what to say. Has been a very humbling time for me. And also going through the facts and everything else has been a very sobering time. Knowing that I can miss by not saying things that need to be said and for your comprehension. And also, um, you not having ears to hear what I have to say because a man will uh, hear what he wants to hear and disregard the rest. Simon Garfunkel, and then, uh, we really don't change until we have to. And that's, we're looking into the future, very new future. And things are gonna start happening to us. We're in a time of perilous times where things happen. School shootings. Four years ago, we had, uh, the killings down there at Las Vegas, fifty-three people died, four hundred and eleven people were, had gunshot wounds and another four hundred people were trampled down, pushed and shoved and injured. So, all these things just happened to you, happened to us, and we have to be prepared. I'm very privileged to find this author and, uh, see, uh, oh, uh, it's on the board now, um, the handouts. Oh, everybody got their handout, okay, good. The next screen. This handout will save me a lot of time explaining all the different variants about solar cycles. And, uh, so you understand, we are in a change. A very drastic change, so. I credit a lot of this to, uh, Dr. Valentina Zakova, who did this report on Summit of Astrophysics and Space Re- Research. Okay, the next sheet, Mike. She came up with the formula because this formula changed science. It changed how other people have tried to find how the sun works and all the different cycles that it produces. She came into narrowing it down with this formula. And once she had the formula, she went ahead in time. And, uh, and she went a thousand years, two thousand years behind because uh, all that was stated in the National Scholistic, Scholastic Magazine. And so she was right on target with all her, her information she had. Something to understand about the way she came into it was that she had an understanding of concepts and principles. She understood that downsizing of concepts, ideals and principles to find the core function of principles that, that do work. So basically, she found what the parameters are to make things work, and that's what we have to do in the solar cycle. Find out what the parameters are. Henry Ford, when he made the Ford engine, it was almost like an impossibility because you had, he, he finally came up with a flywheel with a magnet on that generated the current, then he had to have a, see, he had to have a coil, and he had to have points and spark plugs that finished to process up, so it was a regressive thing. You get down to the lots of bolts, you find the beginning of it, you understand the principles of it, and then you can go from there. And that's what she did. She find the variables that work, and she was able to work everything out, and anybody who has understanding about this, I think, uh, we lack a lot of understanding in what we, what we do, so. But she had understanding of the solar, solar cycle, so the next, uh, page shows, uh, if you see, it's an oblong circle, very vertical. This was in the time period where she came up with that formula. It was, she was able to go forward and predict and then very figures how the future would be, and then she understood, yes, this is really on target. And she went forward. And then she went backwards to get that confirmation, what I said before, so. Let's go to the next one. One confirmations is that, um, NOAA and NASA both came up with an agreement, uh, that we are entering into a full-blown grand solar minimum. Grand means huge, solar means from the sun, minimum means minimum sunspots. Our whole Earth depends on the sun. We have highest sunspots, we have awesome growth, and when we have low sunspots, we usually had, in like nineteen twenty-nine, we had, uh, the stock market crashes, so. Understanding this, the first signs came up over British Columbia, as you see in the picture, northwest corner. They, they, from space, you can tell that this thing is forming. And it will keep on forming as we move more into solar cycle twenty-five. So the next one is the grand modern grand solar minimum. Okay, this is where we started getting into the meat of it, the heart of it. And to understand the parameters of it, I think is very important. This thing is to occur in twenty twenty to twenty fifty-three, so it seems like a long period of time. But what she's talking about, the beginning of it and the end of it, because light goes on after that. But we come to a very narrow passage in twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine, uh, two thousand thirty, where we up here have opportunity, we have all the resources to make a change, a good change. Where other parts of the nation and the world do not have the opportunity that we have. So I, I hope that we can under grasp the opportunity that is here for us. Uh, in a time of, uh, while put this way, they looked at the, the modern minimum back in sixteen forty-four to seventeen ten. And it was a time where people were stressed to make a living. It was a very hard time, very cold. The earth had dropped a whole degree. And the Thames River in, uh, in London froze over, and a lot of rivers did freeze over in that time period, so. Some of the aspects of it is, it's a big impact on terrestrial temperature. The temperatures dropped down. Now, last time I hear, I, I talked about this Dalton Minimum, when Lewis and Clark went through. In their, in their, uh, in their book, they, they, they they wrote down the temperatures. Temperature minus three is the most that winter. They were there five months in Fort Mandan. And that was a Dalton Minimum. Now we are on the same page as they are in solar, solar reduction of sunspots. And as, as the temp, as the sunspots go down, the temperature goes down. Now, what, what Dr. Zakova's talking about, she's talking about, it's not gonna be as bad as it was in sixteen forty-five to seventeen ten. But it's a passage where you have to be prepared for it. And this is where the change has to come in. We have to understand that there's a reduction of the magnetic field where you have cold winters and summers. The ozone is reduced, high cloud formation, jet streams turn into, uh, I think I presented that last time. It's the, the top of the stratosphere. Uh, the currents are more wavy, and you'll see this on, on your weather, how, how they are forming around the earth. On the top of this line is, uh, maybe I got it here, I can show you. So you can understand, on the top of this line, you have, uh, cold, cold. And then you have hot, hot. So you have drought in one area. And then the top area, you have snow, snow formation. Now, we know through history that this area was exempt from the Ice Age. Ice Age went from, uh, Glendive to Williston, Williston to Newtown, Newtown, to Bismarck, then went all the way down to the Ohio River and up the Saint Lawrence Channel. So we are in a perimeter where we may not experience the cold, colds, we may not experience the hot, hots, and that's what I'm praying for, that that we have rains to, to produce, uh, crops here. Now, um, what I wanted to say next. Okay, this is the heartbeat of my presentation. And this is what we have to understand. I believe her formula is correct because she had great, uh, great support from her scientific community that was involved in it. And this is a progression where people have been trying to understand the sunspots and the relationship, the character of the sun. And she got this formula back in twenty fifteen, so. Uh, if you look down at twenty-ten, it was, it was a great reduction on the sunspots. If you remember, two thousand, two thousand eight, we had a lot of deer out here. A lot of cars were getting rubbed. Deer were bouncing in the ditch. Two thousand nine, that all changed because the drop, all of a sudden, there was a drop in temperature. We had cold, cold weather, we had, I don't know about the hot summers, I can't remember the hot summers, but uh, it was a different time of change. In two thousand ten, we had the same weather patterns, just cold, forty below, twenty below, forty below winds. Then, if you look at twenty-twenty, so we're in twenty-twenty-one right now, but we're back down in this drop again, where there's reduction in a sunspot, so you'll see, uh, we could have a very cold, cold, cold winter because it, what the report is saying here, I believe is true. One thing we have to be concerned about, let me see if I'm done with this, let me finish up on this. You see a tight spirit, a tight area there, if you go to solar cycle twenty-five right at the end, you see these little starts, uh, sunspots are, are going down, okay? So that's a very narrow time where it can get really cold. And what she's saying during that time period is that vegetation growth will vary short. There'll be no vegetation growth, and what she means like that, if you plant a crop, you might be able to get that crop in the ground, but it's not gonna finish off. So if you have greenhouses, other ways, if you have other ways already in place to grow food, if you have grains stored up to where you can make energy bars and have all the vitamins and minerals in it to keep you going, that's what you need, so to make it through an area like that because, uh, there's not gonna be, no growth. And then it goes on to, um, solar cycle twenty-six, so. In there, you have twenty-thirty, and the United Nations has a plan at twenty-thirty called Adapt, not Adapt twenty-thirty, Agenda twenty-thirty. They have plans for us. My thinking is that let's make our own plans, let's find a way, because we do have opportunity up here, so. We go through another long period with low sunspots. Now, the thing between, um, where we are now, we're gonna, uh, twenty-twenty and solar cycle twenty-five, where it's right up there, you'll find that the sunspots do go up. It's not as great as, as the last solar cycle twenty-four. But I think it's a time period where crops can grow. If you get the rain, crops can grow, and we can start soaring, preparing for this, but in any situation, it takes plain people that do plain things that make the community happen. In this situation, it takes a diversity of persons with different skills. Gaining an overall insight, understanding the parameters of what we're gonna, what we're dealing with. And come up with, and then make the adjustments that we need, that we need. You have to understand, this did happen on Earth before in sixteen, in the modern minimum. But if we grasp hold of what I'm saying, we could do well with this. We have opportunity, we have agriculture up here, we have lentils, and lentils are very hard to find, but east uh, Red River, they do grow lentils up there, so. Coming along to the next page, um, this is kinda interesting because you can almost play a game, and if you know history, you could document all the different, uh, aspects, what have happened in history. See, I kinda like history, and all these things happened, a lot of the things that were negative happened in a, a, a minimum. When the sunspots were down. When nineteen twenty-nine rolled, the world, this is the truth, about nineteen twenty-nine. We went into the Great Depression. March, we had record highs in the stock market. The people didn't know that they were being manipulated. Later in nineteen thirty-two, uh, Security Exchange Commission was organized to stop the crime and the mistreatment in the stock market, so. To fix the stock market, and so it couldn't function because the bankers and, uh, corporations came up with a lot of money. Then nineteen thirty-seven, the United States prosecuted.
Mr. Bedoin, I, I think you're.
Pardon me?
I said you said your timer there, but I think you're well over your timer.
Okay, am I timed up?
Yes, it is.
Is there anybody that has questions? I think I've got the main, main, uh, point across. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your information.
Next, we got, uh, abatements for two thousand eighteen to Sierra Ridge, final, uh, negotiations at, uh, yeah, but I'm, I'm skipping that. That takes quite a bit longer. If that's okay with you.
Okay, Commissioners, um, Amanda was actually gonna do this, but we all know she's not here, so she had sent out a letter a while ago showing you guys what, um, is it Rom? Yeah, Attorney Rom had agreed to on that two thousand eighteen abatement for Sierra Ridge. And we finally came to an agreement that it would be reduced to twenty-five million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand five eighty for a true and full value, and nothing would be done with the nineteen twenty or twenty-one. No, they agreed to the amount of the twenty-three thousand, which is what Joe hasn't said at. So twenty-three million two twenty-one five hundred will be set and stay that way for the next three years. So we just need a final motion to approve the abatement with the reduction down to that twenty-five million two twenty-seven five eighty. And it'll finally be over with.
The motion for nineteen twenty and twenty-one too, or just eighteen?
Well.
They're not gonna appeal.
Well, that was the agreement. There's nothing that we can do if they file an abatement. I don't think legally, if they would actually do the paperwork, if we could actually, I don't know that. That's.
Current litigation. Remember that agreement says that's what it is, and I believe they agreed on it.
Yep. Yes. Yep.
That's what it is. Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we, uh, approve the twenty-eight tax year assessment to, reduce it from twenty-eight five eighty-six to hundred to twenty-five million seven twenty-seven five eighty.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Dis opposed? Motion carries.
Salvany, thank you.
Okay. Next, I see we have some people waiting for planning and zoning. Steve, are you ready to go with that, or?
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Josephson, County Planner. The Planning and Zoning Commission held its, held a meeting last Thursday and heard three requests for rezonings, and the, they, they recommended approval on all three. So the first one is that public hearing is for Nick and Lee and Latang. They wanna rezone a six-acre piece. One Forty, Range Ninety-Six. The Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommended approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Josephson? I'll look for a motion to approve that request.
I'll make that motion to approve RZ oh five twenty-one for Nick and Luann Letang.
Second.
The motion is second. We'll call vote Commissioner Arthod.
Aye.
Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The second one then?
Thank you. The second one, there was a public hearing held for Todd Wyler. Mr. Wyler was requesting a rezoning from agriculture to agricultural residential on a parcel located in the northeast quarter of Section Fifteen, Township One Forty, Range Ninety-Five, consisting of ten acres. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommended approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have about this.
Is there any questions?
Just real quickly, is that the sketch on the layout, third page, is that intentionally not rectangular?
That was how it was surveyed.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, the property had been surveyed and purchased that way.
I'll look for a motion to, on this matter, for-
Make a motion to approve RZ zero six twenty-one for Todd Wyler on the rezoning, the petition from agricultural to agricultural residential.
Second.
The motion is second. We'll call vote Commissioner Arthod.
Aye.
Commissioner Xander.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. Then we got a third one, right?
The third public hearing was Robert Lawrence was requesting a rezoning from agriculture to agricultural residential on a parcel located in the south, one half of the north, one half of the northeast quarter, of the northeast quarter of Section Thirty-five, Township One Forty, Range Ninety-Five, containing approximately ten acres. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommended approval. There was a question from the state's attorney about who owned that, who owned that property, because if you look at the, the signature page, um, you, you see Mr. Lawrence's, Lawrence's signature for both, although, you know, for one of them, it was for, so, we, it was for, um, you know, his, his brother. So we did ask Mr. Lawrence for further information, and he sent an email earlier this week saying, "Attached is the requested PR document for my brother's estate. He passed without a will, no surviving spouse, and no children. I, my sister Carlotta Ellis, and my sister Roberta Stroh are the surviving mem, family. The purchase agreement includes all three of our signatures as consenting to the ten acre sale." And I've got, I've got a copy of that agreement, the, the probate agreement. If, um, here, I'm gonna enter it into the records, and I'm gonna provide it to the, to the Commissioners. So, even though it's signed, it, he is signing as an agent for that, for that estate because there is no, there was no will.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll look for a motion on this matter, then, to approve or deny.
I'll make a motion to approve RZ seven twenty-one for the Robert Lawrence rezoning.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second. We'll call vote Commissioner Arthod.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll notify the applicants today of the board's action. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Shawna, you want to do your information systems?
Shawna Davenport, Emergency Services Director, um, here on behalf of the IT Committee. I am just submitting this Information Services System request. It's a policy that will be part of the handbook. It is just basically going over how employees will be able to submit requests for IT support. Um, all of these are pretty much in place throughout the county already, using the online portal provided by Consolidated, um, phone support, email, text message. It also goes over requests for service, um, the priority levels between urgent, high, medium, and low, um, and how the tickets will be responded to and updated, also if there's any issues, and how the IT Committee will handle those, and if there's any planned maintenance and unplanned outages, how we will communicate that throughout the county. Pretty straightforward. So I would just ask for a motion to approve that policy to be added.
Any questions? Now, I'll look for a motion to approve the policy for Information Systems Service Request.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And since we're in policies, Joetta, you want to do yours, or?
Good morning. I'm Joetta Piercy, Human Resources Director. Um, I have two, um, policies, and actually, I'd like to start with the performance management one. Um, we've been meeting as a group, the leadership team, and, uh, have, I've, I've gone over a lot of different scenarios, different performance management tools, and this is, um, the final draft that we've come up with. And, um, what we've, what we really want to get across is something that is throughout the whole year. This is not a focus on a once-a-year annual evaluation. Um, I have provided you with a tool, though, that we are looking at using, um, and we would like to start and get this implemented this year, um, to start using the annual tool. But I think most importantly, we're wanting a formal performance management policy so that, um, managers build relationships with employees and are meeting with them continually throughout the year, whether that's one-on-one meetings, or at least quarterly, just opportunities for them to meet, discuss, um, their performance, their goals, and where, you know, they're going for the future and working with the department. So, um, this kind of lays out the, um, guidelines of the policy and the form. Are there any questions that you guys came up with when reviewing this? We discussed a lot on who would do evaluations, because it does get complicated when you have elected officials in the mix of things. We decided that it would just be easiest to exclude evaluations of elected officials, and then with feedback from Amanda, she felt this form wouldn't be appropriate for attorneys either. So, and then the extension agent, of course, is a state employee, so they have a different evaluation tool that they use.
Any questions? Motion to approve the performance management policy?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
The second.
Second.
Just for discussionary purposes, um, you did a great job putting together the evaluation tool, form, looks really good.
Yes, and, um, we did, I had about six managers that tested this out for me with, using Adobe Sign, and it just, it works very, very well. So, um, there is a self-evaluation piece that comes with this, so the employee would evaluate themselves first, and then it would go on to the manager, and then they would meet and get together and discuss that, so.
So then it'd go from the employee to the manager, the manager reviews it and sees the employee's evaluation of himself?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yes, yes.
And is there, and, and there for the employee to evaluate the manager?
Uh, we haven't implemented that yet. We could certainly add that.
Probably don't want to have their name on it when they're doing that.
In the future. Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and the grievance policy?
Okay, so, um, as you all know, we've been going through the handbook, and Chapter Fifteen was an employee complaint, um, and appeal section policy, and I was all set to come here and present a more formal grievance policy to you. And then, uh, last week at the North Dakota, um, convention, I met with a lot of other HR directors, and we discussed what a true at-will employment relationship is, which is what we have. It's in our handbook, and, um, uh, many of them have decided not to have grievance procedures in their handbooks because it really contradicts the at-will employment relationship, because what at-will says is that you can let anybody go, you know, um, for any reason that is not illegal. You can't let people go for illegal reasons, so you can't discriminate against people, um, you know, you can't let them go because they filed a work comp claim, or, you know, did something according to federal or state law, like a leave of absence, they can certainly apply for that. So, um, it really, it really does contradict it. I mean, this has mediator, it has, it has all the things in there that really, that you don't need to go through all of these steps, you know? We have a right to change our business needs as we do, and an employee has a right, if they don't like, you know, their work or what they're doing, they have a right to quit too. So, I am proposing that we remove Chapter Fifteen from the handbook and do not have a formal grievance procedure. Now, if someone does have a complaint, um, we always have the chain of command, and then if it is something that they believe is illegal, we do have our harassment and our conduct, um, policy that is in place, and there is a complaint procedure there, too.
I agree, I agree, and I will make that motion that we remove this from our handbook.
A motion to remove this policy, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lisa, are you ready for your, okay, we'll take a five-minute break here, and then we'll go into the park board.
Did you say break?
Five minutes, yeah.
Five?
Five minutes.
That doesn't even give us time to get up and get down.
I think ten minutes.
You better move then, you got-
Park Board to order. Our agenda is on the page you've been provided, and I guess the first thing we need to do is ratify the agenda. So I'd entertain a motion to do that.
It's all motion.
Got a, a, a motion from Ken to ratify the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Carla seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Uh, now the minutes, the minutes of the last meeting. If you've had a chance to read them, are there any additions or deletions or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the August third, two thousand twenty-one meeting.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from the last meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. So next up is Lisa with her monthly report.
Hi, good morning. Lisa Heiser, County Parks Director. And I'm just gonna give you a brief, um, report here. We finished up our Dickinson State University rodeo. The Fair Association did the concessions for them and gave them fifty percent. We were able to, um, pull in just over sixty-eight hundred dollars out of the concessions. So they're getting half of that. So they were very grateful and we did a really good job and had some signature items on the concessions. So you guys will have to come out and try some of those things, um, the next year, I guess, when we have some more. Um, we're wrapping up next weekend is our last event out at the fairgrounds. Um, unless weather holds, I suppose we'll do a couple barrel races or something out there. And then we'll be winterizing and cleaning it up for the winter and getting everything all prepared for the next season. We're already booking into next year. I would guess that we've probably got about a fourth of the calendar full for next year already, um, with some new events and some of the same events changing dates. So that's all I have for you for your report unless anybody has questions for me.
I have two.
Sure.
What are the signature items?
Well, one is a deep fried pickles and the other one is called a raspberry cheesecake chimichanga. It's a dessert. It is Ask Al. It's very good. Both of those items are very good. I just wanted us to kind of get a couple signature items that really you can just only come to the fairgrounds and get or very rarely get somewhere else.
So the other question I have is we had an issue with light poles at the fair, or the racetrack?
Yes.
Why is that not on the agenda?
Brad Hardigan has COVID and so he just asked if we would push it, um, because they couldn't be here to talk about it. I can certainly, you know, bring that up for them and, and talk about that if you didn't want to make sure you heard from them.
No, it'd be better if they were here. I was just wondering.
We'll push it to November.
Maybe that was a better question. Why aren't they here?
Yes.
Okay, now we know. Okay. I guess we don't need to accept your report or anything. So we'll move on. We'll move on to old business. The first item on old business is the WildRides rodeo funding request. Uh, I think we all have, uh, I believe this is at a proposed budget, the one?
The, the original one that was with your packets was the proposed budgets. And then the one that says September eighteenth, I think maybe they both say that, um, that shows the actual, that says production position and all of that. Those are the actuals that she provided this morning. And then I've got Alicia Fedega on speakerphone for you here too, if you've got questions from her, if she'd like to report to you as well.
Okay, Alicia, I guess you have the floor.
Hi, everybody. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So those are the expenses that I've paid so far. Uh, there's some blanks on that spreadsheet and those are items that I have not been billed for yet or, um, just haven't paid yet.
Any, any comments from the board? Questions?
So the total expenses of the rodeo was the seventy-eight?
Uh, the total at the bottom is, is what the amounts that are in there so far. So like, I haven't paid for my stock yet. Which I usually don't. Um, but yeah, those, that's the total of everything. Let's see which ones. I haven't received a timed event cattle bill. Um, but the total is sixty thousand, six fifty-two so far.
Yep, the seventy, the seventy-eight thousand one was the budget that she provided to us at the last meeting and then you tabled it. Yep.
Or I think the seventy-eight thousand, that was last year's expenses, um, the total. I believe.
Well, that was the budget that you provided to us for this year.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, that is correct.
Yep. Probably based off of some of that stuff from last year, I would guess.
Yes, correct. Thank you, Lisa.
So the amount of sixty thousand, six hundred and fifty-two, that, I mean, was that, where were the sponsors or how much money did you bring in for sponsors and the gate?
I have, I had two sponsors come through. Um, Charbonneau Car Center, gave three thousand for all three rodeos that I do. And then Boot Barn gave three thousand, uh, for all three rodeos. I had two, um, two people that usually sponsor quite a bit of money. They backed out about two weeks before the rodeo. Um, they blamed COVID or I, I didn't go into questions. They just said they couldn't do it. So um, the rest of the money just came out of my pocket.
And you, when you talk the three rodeos, you're talking the two that you have in Kildare and the one that you have in Dickinson, just so that everybody knows? Cause some of the commissioners don't know.
Correct. Uh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I do two one-day rodeos in Kildare over Labor Day weekend. And then the one in Dickinson.
And how about gate money with that, Alicia?
Um, the gate money total, let's see, we had just around two fifty. And then, um, let me get the total here. Don't have that exact total in here. Let's see, it was just under four thousand, three thousand, seven ninety.
And that was for all three rodeos again?
No, that's just Dickinson. That was the gate money for just Dickinson.
And we did not keep the gate money as we did last year. Um, this year we did not keep that. That went directly to Alicia.
And how much is the request for?
Alicia, they have asked you how much the request, how much you're requesting?
Um, well, I guess I, um, you know, I, I don't know what the budget is or how much I should, um, but out of the sixty thousand that I've paid so far, um, you know, I, I'm definitely fifty to sixty thousand out of my pocket um, for the deal for the Dickinson rodeo. I just don't have the timed event cattle amount. Um, he hasn't billed me yet for that. And then I've got some advertising, um, that, um, they haven't billed me yet for either. And so out of the sixty, you could, uh, take the gate money and then the thousand from Boot Barn, the thousand from, Charbonneau Car Center.
So the amount of sponsors for all three rodeos were just those two people for the Kildare and Dickinson?
No, Dickinson is a completely, I keep Dickinson separate from Kildare. I don't, I have a different account for that. Um, I just, some of my sponsors, they, they want recognition at all, at all the rodeos. And so I have to divvy it up to be fair that way. So I have two thousand dollars of sponsorship money coming towards Dickinson. And this year at the NFR, I have meetings, um, set up already. I'm really working hard to get some corporate sponsorship. Um, I've hired Connie Germanson to, um, she's actually starting November first to, you know, just get things more organized. Um, we're gonna start booking people. Uh, we're working on a better grand entry opening show. Um, just, there's a lot of things that, um, that need improvement. And I've been trying to do it all my, myself and it's too much. Um, and I recognize that. This year I did amp up the advertising and social media. Uh, but again, it wasn't enough. It was, it needs to be earlier, more. And, um, yeah, there's always, I have a lot of improving to do that's for sure.
Do you have a ballpark number of what you spent on advertising this year?
Uh, let's see here. Um, so that, that Ted Harbin that you'll see the two thousand for, um, I paid, um, so that's, um, he handled, he helped all the social media. And he handles social media for a lot of the, um, contestants. And so he like, he would like talk to people all summer, you know, at other rodeos and, and he did most of my, um, social media posting. Um, but as far as the advertising, I would say two. And then I've got three, four. It was, uh, just under s- five thousand, I would say. Cause I've got, I think most of the advertising's there on here, except for the Mix FM. They haven't billed me yet.
Yeah, and the KFR, there's a blank. And Quality Quick Print, there's a blank. And I did see your posters around town. So I'll have to say you did a better job with that. I saw them in several places, but.
And the radio. I heard quite a bit on the radio.
I mean, I think, I think you could, I mean, rodeo is well promoted around here. I mean, I, I just think that the sponsors of just being two, I kind of find that a little bit to where I think you could get a lot more sponsors for your rodeo in this area rather than two.
I, I agree with you. I think I can, um, I've been so, I don't want to say scared, but for a lack of better words, hesitant or scared. I don't want to step on Rough Rider Commission toes and, um, you know, that was something that I promised right from the beginning not to do. Uh, so, but I, you know, I, I definitely think that I could, um, that I should, you know, talk to more people. Cause there's oil field companies. I mean, there's a lot of companies that, that they want to give, but like, for example, they have to be approached right now for next year. And so that's what we're doing. We're going to some of these bigger companies and, and, um, you know, getting in, into their budget now for next year.
Okay, Ken, do you have the floor?
Yeah, uh, you, you mentioned three, uh, rodeos. I know Kildare, Dickinson. What's the third one?
Uh, Kildare, I do two one-day rodeos back to back.
Okay, so, uh, wh- what kind of, uh, financial assistance are you getting from the Kildare uh, rodeos, from public funding?
Um, for the Kildare rodeos, um, it's mostly, uh, friends, friends and neighbors. Um, Wiley Bice kind of heads that up for me. And, um, he approaches people and, um, they like to give to these rodeos. Um, and then again, the only corporate, I did have some oil field sponsorship this year for Kildare.
Did, uh, I assume in Kildare, you're talking about at the Dunn County Fairgrounds?
Uh, the, the rodeo takes place during the fairgrounds. Um, but I am not associated with the fair, so to speak, but we are trying to revitalize the Dunn County Fair.
Right.
And so
I understand.
With that being, go ahead.
I'm just curious, do you, uh, do you, uh, rent the facility for your rodeo? Or is it gratis from Dunn County Park?
Uh, no, I had to pay, pay to rent the facility in Kildare.
Okay, and what are you paying to rent, uh, Starr County facility?
Twelve hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Okay.
And then do you get any money from the Kildare Saddle Club as well, Alicia?
Um, I usually get five thousand a year, but I did not, um, get the five thousand this year from the Saddle Club.
How about the Dunn County Commission? Did you go to that? I mean, do you get anything from Dunn County?
Uh, I approached them and they do not. I went to a meeting and they do not do any funding. They said you need to go to the Fair Board. And, um, so I am a member of the Fair Board here in, in Dunn County. And they're, they just said they won't, they won't contribute. And, um, they get quite a bit of gaming money every month. Um, so I, um, I'm considering, um, Wiley Bice and I are considering, um, opening a nonprofit organization and trying to uh, go after some gaming money in the area. But yeah, I did not get any assistance from Dunn County. The, the city of Kildare did kick in five thousand from their hospitality fund um, to go towards the Kildare rodeos.
Well, well, that's kind of where I'm going is the CVB in, in, uh, Dickinson, do they help you out?
It's asking you if the CVB helps you out in Dickinson?
Um, no, I have, no, they have not, nor have I approached them.
So.
Um, I, I did give them some free tickets. They had, uh, their blogger for the visitor's center. Um, her and her family came to the rodeo and then they blogged about it for advertising. And they did do some, the, the visitors, they did do some advertising for me too.
I would like to address the board. Uh, this, this isn't really our event. I mean, it's, it's her event and it's really not up to us to fund it. I think we should, however, help or promote it. So I would, I would like to see us do something with the help on the advertising. And I think we should pay for the porta potties because we don't have restrooms out there. Um, Ken?
Yeah, in regards to your remarks, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I agree that, and I, I'd follow that up by saying, you know, when I look at the expenses and the payments and, and I know that this, there's a lot of money involved here for a one-day event. And, uh, it just seems to me that we're a facility provider. We're not in the marketing business. And I, I, I really hesitate uh, and question, uh, if we should be involved in this as a- as far as we have been in the past. And, and, um, I'd be more than happy to entertain some discussion about the, uh, the points, uh, brought up by, uh, the chairman. And I would say, in addition to that, the, you know, the facility rent, you know, I, I think we got some wiggle room in that too.
Yeah, fair enough. Yep. Anybody else have some points or would want to weigh in?
Um, I agree with Commissioner Zander on this, but, and but we have to be a little bit careful with the wiggle room on the rent because then how about everybody else that comes in that we have to pay rent for?
I agree.
So maybe a little bit, but if we go and give to this person, then are we gonna have to start adjusting rents for everybody else that comes in to do something?
I don't know how we, and, and following your comments, Commissioner, I thought, I don't know how we arrived at that twelve hundred, uh, whatever figure it was for the facility rent. I don't know how that number was, um, cut up. It's arbitrary number and or what.
I can answer that for you. The Fair Association sets the rental fees. Every year they look at them and look at how much the fees will be and how much we've collected. That's, they're the ones that set that. So that's why that charge is what it is. And that's always been that way. That's, they're the ones that set that. So that's why that charge is what it is. And that's always been that way.
So, did you say the Fair Association?
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that isn't even really, we can't even mess with that.
That's not wiggle room.
Yeah, that's.
Technically, no, unless we go to that board and ask for them to.
Right.
Adjust, but. And, and I will tell you, we've kind of set that as a precedence not to do something different for one person or the other. We want to do it the same for everybody. Um, so we've, we haven't done that in the past, even with the concessions building. Um, we just haven't done that.
So how, Lisa, how is the sanitation, she doesn't have an amount in here for sanitation. How is that handled?
Um, we get it through the Fair Association and they bill us for the specific events and then we turn around and bill it back um, to the person that rented it. So hers last year was $250. It'll be roughly the same amount. Um, this year they went up a little bit, but no more than 300.
Yeah, and isn't that why we're charging a, a rent, facility rent? And so, you know, I, I think we can uh move beyond that one.
We, yeah, we should, we should be covering that because we should have, we should have restrooms out there.
We have restrooms out there. When they go over and above, that's what they pay for. They don't pay for the ones that the Fair Association has out there for every event, but if they require more, and some of the spectator events require more. And so they have to go over and above. If they need 30 and we only provide five, that's their cost.
Yeah.
And they know that upfront when they sign contracts with us.
So um, I think we've spent enough time on this. We'd entertain a motion for a dollar amount if, if we're going to give any. And uh,
Well, I will throw out a number and I, and I'm just picking this number, $5,000. I.
Are you, are you putting that in the form of a motion? Are you?
No. I'm, I'm waiting for uh others to speak up, I guess.
Jason, Neil, you got any input? Ernie?
We gave her quite a chunk last year.
Yeah.
That's to sort of set a precedent there and it's tough, tough, tough at this point.
Well, and I'll say it again. I think she really dropped the ball with last year is what I'm saying now.
Did a better job this year, but yeah.
Yeah, but we're, we're good. We got an event with 250 people in it. And I compare that to what's going on at the racetrack where they're routinely drawing 1,000 people from what I've observed and been told. And uh, we don't give them anything.
So at that 3790, is that how many people about came to this rodeo? Was 250?
Yes, correct.
And this is rodeo country.
And that's, and that's what I agree with. It is rodeo country. I think, I mean, I am very glad that there is a PRCA rodeo coming. I'm really glad you're doing this, Alicia. I just think that on the sponsorship side, maybe you need to work a little bit harder.
Yeah, I, I, you're, you're correct. I agree with you.
Well, I guess, I guess for lack of a motion, I guess we're just gonna deny you any funding, I guess. That's where we're at. So thank you for your presentation and, and good luck going forward.
All right, thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, all right.
We'll move on to new business. Um, this is Friendship Park and it's Sarah Carlson.
Hello, members of the board.
Hi.
I am revisiting. Um, I came to a commission meeting in 2019 and then also visited um, with the park board then about a request for some funding to support our playground. I've given you all a case statement. Um, as an, and as a reminder and for some new faces, Friendship Park is a playground that is being designed to support children with disabilities and the general community. There is not currently a playground that is suitable for children with disabilities to play. Examples of accessibility that we need includes um accessibility to accommodate wheels like wheelchairs, gate trainers, walkers, those kinds of things. Um, accessibility for kids with low vision or blindness, kids with, who are hard of hearing or deaf, kids with sensory needs like swinging, spinning, lots of different sensory activities that we can provide for kids that might be on this spectrum or have other sensory processing disorders. Our, the current playgrounds in the Dickinson and surrounding communities, um, while they meet ADA accessibility, they do not provide the true inclusion that we need for these kids. Um, in the case statement, you'll meet a couple of kids. Zeppelin is our cute little girl who has a sensory need. Um, she's diagnosed with autism and would benefit from safe play structures um, to accommodate her needs. And then my son Beckett is the other little boy that's in that playground. The nearest inclusive playground is in Mandan. So currently our family travels 200 miles for us to be able to play um, with kids that are like Beckett or that include him in the playground. All of the surrounding playgrounds in this area have wood chips or sand um, and are inaccessible for his wheelchair. It's totally impossible to push a wheelchair in that kind of environment. So we have raised a considerable bit of money. Um, we have had wonderful community support. Um, we've had bake sales, church support. Um, we, the city of Dickinson has granted us $250,000. The city park board has granted us $200,000. And I'm asking that our Stark County Park Board um, matches those funds of a $200,000 um, contribution to support this playground. It is not just the city of Dickinson that is going to use this playground. It is all of the surrounding area. There are children that, that come to Dickinson for their P T O T, um, some of their therapy needs that are coming from Billings, Montana, um, and from Hettinger and Bowman and Kildir and Bellfield. And so this playground will really be a destination playground to meet those needs. Some of the questions the last time that I visited was um, to discuss what, why can't we um, maybe revamp or tear down an existing playground in our city? So the challenge with that has to do with cost because we would have to pay um, to tear down an existing playground and then the same cost to build. But there is also very few options that have good parking options that are off-street parking that are going to um, continue the good relationships that we have with our neighbors. And so Friendship Park does have land that's been donated that's right alongside the interstate, interstate, just west of 10th Avenue East, north of Gum. And so there's about seven acres of land um, right next to the interstate there that is at no cost to us. So we do not have to pay any land costs. We've started the surveying process and it looks like a safe, wonderful place to have a playground. Um, and will provide um, some great visuals similar to the Mandan Playground as you're driving into town. Um, a great visual reminder for kids to ask their parents to stop and play. Um, and also visit some of our other um, local like eateries and things like that along their um, travels. To update you on some of the costs. So in the case statement, it talks about different phases. And I'd just like to um, point out some differences um, with our current proposed budget. So the playground equipment and surface, we are estimating that to be around $600,000. The road and parking lot, around 300,000. We need a picnic shelter and bathrooms. Um, and these bathrooms are not just your standard typical bathrooms. Um, in order to support my son with his bathrooming needs, currently there's really no place in Dickinson that I can do that. That's a public. Um, I need to place him on the floor. He doesn't have the trunk support to sit on a toilet. And so our bathroom spaces will provide an adult changing table that we can have safety with that and we're not placing children on floors. And so the bathrooms will be a little bit specialized to accommodate these needs. And then designing and engineering, $250,000 with a contingency of about $150,000. So the total amount is about 1.6 million dollars. I am so happy to report that Friendship Park Committee has raised 1.2 million dollars. So we are really at the home stretch and would so much appreciate your support with that equal match to the Dickinson um, park board of the $200,000.
So you said you already have, what's the word I'm looking for? People that will give you how much money?
We already have 1.2 million dollars that we have fundraised and we have it. Um, this has allowed us to start some of the engineering process, um, which we hope to continue through the winter and then break ground in the spring.
So Dickinson Parks and Recs are doing what for you?
They, so they did $200,000.
That's, that's the city's part then, is it from?
No, and then the city on top of that did another $250,000.
So why isn't the city park board building this park?
It's really, it really has to do with cost. Um, you can take any of the playgrounds, Williston, in Minot, in Mandan. There was great fundraising and grant um, writing opportunities to make sure that the playground was truly inclusive. It really has to do with the excess um, cost that has to, that we have to consider for the equipment needs. It is specialized um, surfacing. It is specialized equipment that goes beyond what the American with Disabilities Act requires.
So the, I was just going to say, so the, the, the location is that little triangulated piece to the west of 10th Avenue, to south of Interstate?
Yes.
So you would uh, take Gum Avenue in there. And so your money that you need for the uh, parking lot would be at the end of Gum Avenue to, to provide access to that, that area.
Right, so it would be a road to get to the parking lot and then um, the parking lot surfacing itself.
How big is that piece?
It's about seven acres.
Oh, it is that big, okay.
Road is part of your
Yes.
So now the question is, it's all specialized equipment. It's going to take more maintenance. What do you have in plan for taking care of maintenance? Because you go to the parks that we have now. And they're neglected or abused or whatever. And so how are you going to continue with this? We spent a bunch of money on it and in two years from now, the kids won't be able to use it because nobody takes care of it.
I don't anticipate that problem. Um, so we, uh, the Dickinson Park Board will take over this playground once it's built and provide the maintenance. Um, when using our friends to the east, the Mandan um, park board has provided us wonderful resources of grants that they used to, to build their playground, um, as well as information like ongoing maintenance costs. The rubberized surface has never needed replaced and it's been there for like 15 years. Um, and um, the main cost that they have as an ongoing cost is trash. That is the most, that's the highest expense because it's so utilized by their community. And so um, our park board is willing to take that on. When it comes to the specialized equipment, we have established an endowment. Um, and so we hope that that endowment continues to grow. It has already been started. And it's our anticipation that if there is equipment needs, that Friendship Park Committee will provide funding from our endowment to replace any equipment that needs, that is broken and needs to be replaced.
Just to follow up a little bit with uh, Commissioner Marsh is mentioning, it, would it be my understanding that the ownership of this park would be Dickinson Park and Recs? Is that correct?
That is correct. After the build. They, they are, they are really helping us host because we're not playground manufacturers. Um, they, so this will be a bid that will go out from Dickinson Parks and Rec.
And where are you in your grant applications and process?
To the point where we've raised 1.2 million dollars.
Now, is, most of that is from uh, government entities and or private individuals?
Uh, yes, well, and grants. So there was a $450,000 grant that we were awarded. Um, that was probably the most significant one. Um, otherwise it's private donations. It's bake sales from churches. It's um, uh, other, other means.
Are there any other grants out there that you're waiting on? Because there has to be.
Not currently.
Okay.
I, I'm still not understanding why, if we have children in this city that have these extra sensory needs or extra needs for a different park, even though it exceeds ADA, why isn't the city park board building that park?
It really has to do with budget because it is a 1.6 million dollar playground.
I get that, but they should put it in their budget then and build the park.
No question, yeah.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just I could add on a little bit. There are other parks within the community. Uh, you, you take Kiwanis Park or Eagles Park or Optimus Park where the, the organizations started the uh, the process and took the lead. And then Park and Rec comes in and taken over. So I don't think this is an unusual. It is Park and Rec land as well. I'm pretty confident. So I don't think this is unusual, but I agree with you that there's probably a need for them to step up better than, than the 250.
I have a question for, there was a communication tower that was supposed to go in there and they were supposed to help with the roadway in there. Has that been dropped or do you know?
Um, yes, so um, the Verizon Company that was originally renting that land has dropped their lease. Um, and so that is no longer um, on the table.
Okay, because they were talking about building the roadway into their helping with that.
I guess, yeah, my, my main concern is, is the maintenance. Even though you say Dickinson Parks and Recs is going to maintain it, you go to any of our other parks and they're better than they used to be, but there's times that they're vandalized or whatever and you can't control that. And specific, special equipment takes more maintenance and higher dollars to repair.
And I hope we've anticipated that with our endowment.
Well, that's the owner's problem. To deal with.
Yeah.
Right.
And I, when I look at Dickinson Park and Recs, I, I uh, I, I think they do an incredible job.
I, I really do. I would agree with that, but, but I also know that if they want, if they want to build 2.5 million dollars worth of basketball courts, they put it in their budget and they do it. But they're making you do this work to build this park instead of them building it. And I'm not getting that. I just.
Nobody's making me do anything.
Well.
I have, I have a very important reason.
They, they, when you, when you, yes, I guess you do, but when they, when you came to them, they didn't say, we need this. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna partner with you and we're gonna see that this happens.
They have offered really great support to us. Um, I mean, they, they are contributing. But I would challenge, I would challenge this park board that it's not just the Dickinson community though either. This, it's all of the surrounding area that's going to use this playground.
Oh, and I, yeah, and, and that's good, but our, our concern is Stark County. I mean, you know, Bellfield and Richardson, yeah.
So definitely, people from Bellfield, people from Richardson.
Sure, yeah.
And that's where, I mean Dickinson Park and Rec is going to own this park. So I mean, they should step up in the process of building this park. And I agree with Mr. Schwartz.
So are they giving you, I don't know if the speaker's not working maybe, are they giving you the land plus the 200?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the park board gave you 200?
Yes.
And the city gave you 250?
Yes.
Plus the land.
Plus land.
Plus the land.
Yeah, I wish that uh, just to kind of follow up on some of the comments though, I, I like your comment, Mr. Schwartz. I wish that uh, some representatives from the park board would be here with you so that we can ask them directly that question. Why aren't you guys building this?
Who is part of your committee to help you do this?
So James has been very helpful.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he, he does a good job. I'm not, that's not my point.
I mean, on the money part of it all, who is helping raise this money?
Um, so we have a physical therapist, an occupational therapist, other parents of kids with disabilities, the head of a construction company. We have a pediatrician. Um, we have a pharmacist. We're all doing that work.
Oh, I didn't see that, sorry.
Um,
Oh, okay.
Parks and Rec also supported that $450,000 grant. Um, it was, I brought it forward to them. They were the ones to submit it. So it, the money is challenged, channeled through the Dickinson Park and, Parks and Rec for that large grant.
I, I guess I would challenge you to look at other grants too, because I mean, there, there's so many grants out there.
We, and we have applied for so many.
Okay, and what is the status on them?
We've received the funds that, of the, of the grants that we've been awarded. There is an exception. is an exception of the North Dakota Developmental Disability Council. There is, um, some language in their grant that it has to be like used the year that it's built, and so we've already been like, uh, confirmed that we'll be receiving the money when we go to build it.
And how much is that?
I can't recall the exact amount.
Okay.
Is that included in your 1.2?
It is.
Okay.
Well, I think it's wonderful that you have
Yep.
in the bank 1.2. I think that's significant. Uh, and I, I guess, before I make a commitment on any pro or con on contribution, I, I just think we need to get a little further down the road on your fundraising, and, um, I, I mean, I like what you're doing, but I also hear, uh, members' comments and, and, I'm, um, I'm in agreement with, with, in particular, what Chairman Schwartz has brought up.
If we were going to, I'm sorry, what would, I mean, what do we have in our budget that we could even operate?
Well, I, I got that's my question. Listen, I mean, I don't think that's the problem. We, we don't have enough money to do everything we want to do, obviously.
And that's what I would say, you know, I would remind you that we do have the master plan at the fairgrounds, at the motorsports park, you know, we need parks there too, and, and I know in the master plan at the fairgrounds, that is one of the things we are doing is more inclusive type things that she's talking about for this park. So it will exist in Dickinson. My preference, obviously, is to have it at our facility, but that's up to this board. There isn't anything budgeted in this year or next year's budget thus far for Friendship Park right this, at that dollar amount at this point.
I think you're doing an amazing job, and that's such a blessing. I, I would say that everybody on this board thinks you're doing an amazing job. Personally, I would like to know our budget for this year and next year, and s- some support. I mean, it's, it's going to affect our county, it's going to affect our community, and so at the 250, I don't know that that's in our budget, but something can be done.
I, I guess I, that's a pretty good point.
Well, I think we need to put our financial order in place as, as the park board goes, and take a look at, you know, our master plan and what our vision is, because we're eventually gonna run out of money.
Yes.
That money is gonna be gone shortly.
Yeah.
If not by the end of the year, so.
I mean, and just so you understand, I'm supportive of a, I mean, we're all in support, but I mean, just this year, we had to take money out of that budget because we didn't have enough, you know, for our whole county budget, you know, so we didn't even, we had to remove funds out of there just to make ends meet this year. So we just don't have the funds.
I totally understand that. I think the same can be said, though, from Dickinson Parks and Rec, from their own planning and their own, I mean, the same exact conversations exist there as well, is that there are plans, and we're, we came in and said, "This is a need in our community," and they have, they have given great support to us.
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering, uh, also if, well, we're having, we're having ongoing discussions on what to do with the ARPA funds that our county has received, not our county park board, and so there may be an opportunity there as well. I suppose you're coming back for the next meeting, but I've-
Well, I, so I've presented at a commission meeting, is that what you mean? Like, for county commission?
Yes.
So I have and was told to come to park board, and then have now revisited park board.
Neil, what, what?
As, as the rookie member, but yeah.
What funds are you referring to that the, the commission has?
Well, we have some ARPA funds that the federal government came through the orig, for the, uh, infrastructure bill that, that was passed in January.
Okay.
That we have a little more discretion.
Well-
Well, but you were, I, I'm thinking you were at the county commission prior to-
Yes, it was.
But, but that was this year, since that money's been appropriated?
No, no.
She's been working on this for, for a couple of years.
Yeah, it's a couple of years, but, um, yeah. So I, I guess, at this point in time, we are, we are-
We'll just say we're interested, but not right now.
Yeah.
And, and so do you have to have all 1.6 to break ground?
Yes.
Why?
Because there's not really a loan process that, or an ability to pay, pay it back. We have, we har, we're, I'm pretty confident-
1.2 can get you a long ways.
Yes. So we could easily say, "We're not gonna build the picnic shelter," but then we will not be providing bathrooms to the people who are visiting.
Right.
Um, it's, it's hard to say that we won't provide a parking lot. It's hard to say-
I guess what I was saying was, like, if you go to 22 and, and we revisit our budget, and hey, this is something we can help out with, and then now you got more money, and we go to McDonald's down the street, and say, "We'll put a McDonald's sign up there if you give this," and-
We've chased after those.
Doesn't, oh, I got you. They, they didn't do anything?
No, it is on the interstate. There's great opportunity for advertisement, um, right alongside that, and we've made those asks to, um, different entities.
Did McDonald's help you?
They did not.
I, I'm, I'm confused.
Okay.
Your total project cost is how much?
1.6.
But on your handout, it says total project cost 2.65.
That's why I gave those clarifying numbers.
Okay. You might want to update your brochure then. Anyhow.
When do you want to break ground?
Today.
I understand, I understand.
Two years ago.
Yesterday.
Um, because the, the design process has kind of already started, our committee has really dedicated this winter to finish our fundraising, whatever means we can, and to break ground in the spring. It's a need. We've gotta be able to fulfill that need.
Would you want to put this park at our facility?
Well, I think that, would, we'd have to discuss that with our existing land owner.
I, I have a question. You have sponsorship levels in here. Do you have a, a brochure or a form that you use to fill that out?
Um, um, as the, when a donation is given, there is a form that we fill.
Friends, steal, sponsor, copper, do you have an, you know, a form that people fill out to do that? Do you have any with you?
I do not.
I would like one.
Put your checkbook away, she's not ready.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, I, I have one more question.
It's, it is the same sponsorship levels. Um, it is the same sponsorship levels. When we collect the funding, we exchange that with, with, with the form, but it's the, it's the same levels.
Yeah, but I would like, I would like one of the forms.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, just final question. What about, uh, are, are you tracking your in-kind donations as part of your project total cost?
Yes.
So that if, I'll just use Schwartz Construction, if they wanted to come in and donate the dirt work, for instance, you could have a dollar amount that would reflect that, that type of thing?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, Randy.
Yeah, well, thanks for volunteering me, but-
Have you contacted, like, has, have any companies or you contacted them, like, with the building of the shelter and stuff for, if they would do any of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Good.
You're doing a great job.
So, yeah, thank you for coming today, and I guess we are not going to act today.
Okay. It would be really helpful for me to know if I should return, or at what point.
Absolutely, yeah. I'll keep pushing them.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
A month down the road, this winter?
2022.
2022, okay.
Yeah. Once we get our budget.
To a commission meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Larry?
I'm thinking, as we're talking about here, uh, would it be possible to scratch a land that you already have and put it with another park that has bathrooms? So you'd be saving money right there.
I don't think we have another one.
And have, have it associated with, since it's going with the park system already, set aside a playground from one of the bigger parks that have bathrooms and facilities already set up that you can use. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I can answer that.
Sure.
So I think I answered this at the beginning.
Right.
None of the playgrounds have the, the bathroom accessibility that we really need, and none of the playgrounds, we would have to do destruction costs to the existing playground.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Any, any other items that the board needs to address today? As we've reached the end of our agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's almost.
I guess before we do that, I just want, I have a quick question on this. I mean, so like with the budget process, you know, and, I mean, what is our process so we could see what we would have down the road for any money for this friendship park? Or would the, our, you know, with that ARPA funding?
Budget's already done for 2022, so it would have to go into 2023 for that budgeting process.
So if we have extra ARPA money?
Right.
We would be able to maybe use some of that also?
That's what she's talking to her about, is coming back to the November commission meeting, not the park board, but the commission meeting, and talk about the ARPA funding.
Is, is it reasonable to ask that that type of park be put in there at our facility? Is that, is that not a-
She was already talking about that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, this one happens to be down the road from her house, and I think that's a part of the, of why, where it was chosen to be at.
We don't want it at our place, then we're stuck with the maintenance.
But we'll have maintenance regardless, because we'll have a park.
Yeah, that's what I mean, you're, you're already putting, we already need bathrooms, so I would just think, and, you know, maybe that's it.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we ha, we have a motion on the table to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir.
The auditor position, elected or appointed, we gotta decide that this month. Any discussion? And I guess too, is it something you might want to think of, do we want to put it on the ballot for next year? Your options, I guess.
I definitely think that is a good idea that we put it on the ballot and let the people decide if they want that as an elected. I don't know. That's just my, that's elected or appointed.
Won't it be too late?
Yeah, it's, I mean, that's something that's going down the road, we have to make a decision to make it appointed or elected today, and then that's something further down the road.
Yeah, because if we want to do an election, then you have, someone might be running for a position that's an appointed position.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so, and you can't change it in the middle of an, of a term either, an elected term, so.
No.
It's either now or never, the way I see it.
Yeah, that's true.
Commissioner Xander, it's only if the actual elected person chooses to make their position appointed, which they probably wouldn't, just, that's the only way it could be changed during their term.
If the elected official chooses to make it appointed?
That person chose to make their position appointed.
Agrees, agrees to have it appointed, right?
Yes.
That person meaning the elected person?
Correct, yeah.
I wasn't aware of that, but that's a good point, so, you know, I don't know where it was, where this motion will go, but I'm going to make a motion that the auditor's position be appointed. That's a motion. I don't know where it's going.
Public hearing. We already had our public hearings in it.
We already had two.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Hearing no. Second on it dies for lack of second.
Well, then there's only one other motion to make.
Right.
Correct? Well.
I think why you didn't get a second, Commissioner Xander, I just think that there's.
No, that's fine, I understand.
A little bit of discussion that we'd like, I'd like to have.
There's actually two, two options out to this point, we've put it on the ballot to make it, let the people decide to make it a
And that's what I was saying, yeah.
Or else we leave it as it is. And Karen runs, 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 runs as it's, as it's been done in the past, but if, in my mind, if, if that would, if we would want to make it an appointed position, it should be done by the vote of the people and not by us.
I think there's, well, I was just gonna say, I think there's a lot of there's a tremendous amount of reasons why it should be appointed. And the previous experiences that this commission and county experienced are, are only part of them. But the, you, I think Commissioner Marsh hit it on the head, the at, at some point, you, you run with the will of the people. And I think the will of the people, the conversations, I would say it's been two to one, three to one, where people want to keep it as an elected position. And I'm, I'm fine with either way, but like I said, if it remains elected, it's, it's no big deal, I would, I would show different scrutinies than if I showed it as an appointed position, that's just where I'm at, so.
Any other discussion?
So how would that, so can it be on, for the people to decide, you're saying? Commissioner Marsh, so we could put it on the ballot then in November for the people to decide if we want it to be appointed or elected?
I guess that would be the way you'd have to go. For what, what, what reason? Why would you tell me next year, to November next year?
During, during, yeah, next year during the election to let the people decide if they want it to be an elected or appointed instead of us five, because I've heard both so many ways that I'm not gonna, I don't want to choose for the people that want it elected, and I'm not going to choose for appointed.
But it is elected right now.
But it's elected right now.
So we, we'd have to do something major to change it.
I, I'm just, yeah, I'm, there are just a couple issues here, and I know Amanda's much more up on this than I am, but I do know some things though. Number one, by not moving forward with the appointed position, you have left it as an elected position. That decision's been made, and you are elected by the people to make decisions. You can't defer everything over to the public, you've made a decision. Good for you, you've made a decision. Now, there is something else you need to do, because the position is remaining elected, you need to appoint someone as your county auditor. Because it can't, you can't keep going floating like it is now, she's been the acting auditor. When Mr. Henning retired and, and there was a vacancy, you appointed Amanda. You had to do it. You gotta, you, you gotta appoint someone as your auditor. You can't just, you can't just go floating on with acting auditor now.
So what I'm asking, Mr. Hope, is we appoint her as auditor with, do we have the ability then to put it on the ballot next year for the people to decide if it stays elected or it can, or if it can be appointed?
You're asking questions I can't answer, because here's what I'm thinking, because it's, it's getting down the road. Number one, I think by putting it on the ballot, off the top of my head, and I don't have a definitive answer, I suspect Ms. Engelshead can, I think that vote would be advisory in nature, I don't think it would be binding on the, the commission, I think that's a responsibility that's given to you. And so you could put it on the ballot, but it would be in the nature of a referendum. I don't think it would be anything binding, the vote comes in, you want to change it, but then you've got, then you've got those other procedures that you've got to go through the preconditions to changing it from, from elected to appointed, and I, and I can't remember what those are. So I don't know if I've answered your question or not, I mean, yeah, you can certainly put it on the ballot.
You're clear as mud.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just saying, you can, no, you can, I think, I think the commission can, you can put anything on the ballot that you want to put on the ballot, but I don't think it's going to be binding on you, I think it's just going to be a, an opinion poll, is what it's going to be.
Chair, can I make it? On the ballot part? So the way I understood it, Commissioner Arthod, is that at this point, if you leave it elected, like I would run for my position next year, and then you would put it on the ballot as a proposal to the people, and if they voted, let's say they voted to make it appointed, that would not be applicable until that elected official's time is up.
Yeah.
After four years, and then I think you would still have to do the, the two open meetings over again, and then you could make that decision to make an appointment.
Yeah, you, you'd have to commence the process.
It'd basically just be taking a poll to see people's opinions more than anything.
Yep.
Yeah.
Referendum.
Any other discussion?
The other, the other thing, and I'm just kind of stating the obvious, if it is a, a big pressing issue, then at the next election, you could have candidates step forward to say, I'm, I want the auditor's position to be appointed, and then the, the, the public can vote that way.
What did you just say?
I'm just saying that the, you have a commissioner's race next year, and if there are candidates that want to convert from an auditor's from an elected to an appointed position, they can campaign on that basis. If they are successful, they can proceed with their plans. If no one wants to change it, or if there is no outcry for the change of it, there's probably no need to have a referendum.
So commissioners that are running could put that on their
Campaign.
Campaign prompts.
Campaign themes, here we go, campaign platform.
Any other discussion? I'll look for a motion on this matter to make it.
So no motion leaves it as is, as is? Correct?
Correct.
Or you could, or we could make a motion to leave it as an elected position.
So could we go with, could we, so we go with?
Are you hesitant to make a motion?
No, I'm not, I'm just, I mean, I, my, I know what I personally feel, I think it should be appointed, but I, I think the people want it elected, and I'm, I'm very open to responding to that, so I'll make a motion that it remain an elected position, so.
Okay, motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A second?
Discussion. So with Neil saying that we don't act on it at all. I just, I guess I'm wondering, we don't act on it at all, then, but it cannot be put on the ballot because it'd be more of a referendum, I'm not understanding that, or what you're telling me, Jim, on that, Mr. Hope.
You can put it on the ballot, I just wanted to make it, make it clear, that let's imagine that, this is, this is my opinion right now at this moment.
Okay.
Let's imagine you put it on the ballot, and let's say sixty-five percent of the people vote to change it, to make it appointed. That vote by itself is not going to act as a change in the position. It's, it's advisory in nature. That makes sense? And I don't mean that I.
The people are advising us to make the change.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and we have the authority to do it.
So then why don't, why cannot, can we just leave it as is until the election if it's put on the ballot, and then the people, if it's sixty-five percent, then that's when you make your decision?
Sure. Well.
Well, I think you could pass this motion and still make another motion.
You can't do that, though, if an auditor is running for that position and they win their elected position, you can't just look at them and say, now you're appointed.
Right. Is it not true, Jim, I'm trying to speed this along, I'm sorry, once an elected posi, she goes to her election, she gets elected, or they appoint her auditor, and they say that's it, she's an elected official, you cannot just say, now this is going to be an appointed position, she's an elected official, she has all the the, the power or status of all of us, and you would have to have her removed, like any other removal process.
That was going to be my second motion.
And this, yeah, and that was, was my point, is this is where I'm not, I'm not certain, but what I was, what I was getting at is.
I'm sorry, Jim, can you speak into your?
I would, yeah, and I'm sorry, my fault, I have, I have, I have a problem getting up to mics, I, I just do, anyway, the, clearly, if you, it's going to be changed to an appointed position, there are certain preconditions and procedures that have to be met. This commission has complied with those and followed those, you've had your public meetings, there has been input. You are now have it before you today whether to leave it as an elected position or change it to an appointed position. If you were to decide to make it an appointed position, the, the county, there could be a referendum on that decision. By, by leaving it as it is, it will remain an elective position. But that position at this point now needs, needs to be filled.
Yep. I agree with you.
Did I clear that okay, Cory?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but the, but the point is that has been, been raised, both I think by Cory and by, by Karen is, you know, once that, once that election takes place and you're an elected official, there are very significant limitations come on as to when the appointment process can begin again.
Okay, any other discussion?
Karen would have to agree.
Can you come up, Natalie, please? Sorry.
If my memory serves me right, at the point that Karen is elected, she is the one that makes the decision on if she wants to change it to appointed. Because once she's elected, if it was an off year, say she didn't go, she didn't get elected till twenty twenty-four, yeah, then you could put it on the twenty twenty-two ballot for the people to decide, but you're, you're running against the same timeframe. So if Karen takes out a petition to be on the ballot, she's, and she wins it.
She has to go through a full term.
Yep, she's the one that will have the decision if she wants it appointed after that. That's the way, that's the information that we got prior.
Yeah, right, or wait till after her term.
When we started this, year and a half or two years ago.
Or wait till her term expires.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we explored it as an option, we, now was the time to do it when you were in the interim, an acting auditor, whatever you want to call it, position. And like I said, the, the feedback has been pretty much one-sided, so that's, that's where I'm at.
Okay.
I don't agree, I think it should be appointed, but.
Call for the question.
Okay, I gotta remember who made the motions here, Commissioner Messer? Do you vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, do you want me to repeat his motion?
No, I said, Commissioner Messer.
Oh, I'm, aye.
Okay, Commissioner Marsh, second it, right?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander? Commissioner Arthod?
No.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Then we need to make a motion to appoint Karen as
So moved.
Auditor from a, interim auditor.
Yep, I'll move that Karen Richard be an appointed auditor.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Marsh. Any discussion? We'll call a vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
I passed.
Aye.
Commissioner Arthod?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, also that, we had a meeting yesterday with the city, and they wanted Chairman to appoint a committee if to meet with, to decide on the ETZ zone on that, and I believe now there's been some talk of adding a CIZN to that, so we'll have to deal with that, but I, I've decided being I'm on the planning and zoning for the city and the county, that I'll be on that committee, and also since it was Mr. Commissioner Messer's decision to make the committee, to have a committee, is that he be on it also. Okay? And then we'll move on, what's that?
I guess I would like to see if we can get Sandra Kuntz to be, even if we don't have to limit ourselves to one commissioner on there, I'd like to see, she's worked with Williston, she's worked, she's been appointed by the governor to work with Williston, she understands the process.
Well, the, the, so when I walked out of the room, there was what we've just done on the table, these are also public meetings, I had a phone call last night from someone, and he said, I just read it online at the Dickinson Press article, da, 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 I'd like to be involved, show up at the meetings, they're public meetings, and.
That's fine, but Sandra Kuntz was there.
Yeah, but the, these, this is an advisory position only, there is no authority with this working group, they are going to advise and, and make a plan to the, to the city.
And she's worked on these plans already, so she understands the process.
She would make a great, to the advisory board, I mean, she would make a great
I mean.
asset to the board.
She was advised, you know, from the governor to work on the one in Williston, so she, she understands the process way better than any.
I understand that, but I guess the committee was formed yesterday by that, and I guess if we add people to it, the city's got to be approval of it too, so.
The city is, I talked to them, two of them yesterday, I mean, and I talked to Sandy and.
And it should, it should have been discussed at the meeting, though, and not, but afterwards, and then we're picking things up after as we go.
I think there's an opportunity, let's meet as, as this, we, the, part of the reason it was shrunk down was because it's going to be so tough if you don't have a regularly scheduled meeting to get six or eight people together, yet alone ten or twelve, and so I think let's do this, and if, if those individuals that want to show up and the committee within itself wants to expand, they have the ability to do it. This is not precluding anybody from being involved in the process.
One second.
Good thing.
I think we're doing the whole committee, committee to service by not having Sandra.
I agree. I mean, in the city Dickinson, I mean, they're, you know what, they opened it this up for, to have extra people to, I mean, to show they want to work together.
And, you know, I guess, I don't know what Parks and Recs or, or the Airport Authority will add to it, but I think what Sandra can add is a lot.
Well, then we can just add her on to it, I mean, what's the difference between adding her on, or, you know, all due respect, or showing up?
Show up at the meeting, you can participate, no one's going to preclude, preclude that. Mr. Hadley was very right on spot when he said that, how, you know, if we don't have a regularly scheduled time slot, it's going to be real difficult to get people together, I agree, and we'll have the ability to do it, and we'll see how it runs.
I don't know, I guess I gave my opinion on it.
I don't agree, but.
I was, I was glad to see that the city did want to work with the county. I guess, I believe that you'll stand up for the county and do what's best for us, and that's, that's that.
There's, and I would think, I'm sure they're, we were going to meet more than once, I would think we could meet, and if there's a, decide to add somebody to the committee or whatever, but.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Next, Commissioner Arthod, you had something about COVID pay?
There was some talk with COVID pay and with the fact of how hours being used as COVID with kids getting COVID. And I know it's in our policy manual that you have to use up all your vacation time and all your sick leave before you can ask for any donated sick leave. We have people out there that haven't used any of their COVID hours. I guess I just don't understand why we have to, with the COVID piece, I do not want to change the policy, but I don't understand why somebody is having to use all their sick time and all their vacation time before then they can ask for sick time or COVID pay that another employee has not used yet. I mean, because now you're not just talking about the employee, you're talking about the kids. You have the employee that's home, not sick, but they have to stay home. You have these employees that, if their child takes a COVID test, you have other employees that they don't, they don't want them coming to work until the test comes back, so then they're sitting at home for three days having to take sicker vacation.
COVID's totally different than the flu, it's a whole different, I mean, you could, you could easily lose three weeks of, of work time
Yep.
because of COVID, which probably burns up all your vacation time, burns up all your sick leave and everything else, and and you're sitting there, I, I think that, I have to totally agree with you that.
I mean, without making an amendment to the policy, I just think that people should, employees should be able to donate their COVID time if they so choose.
That's fine, but if someone goes on vacation, doesn't take any precautions, and neither, and they don't, they take, you know, they take the risk, I mean, I don't know, I kind of have an issue with that, with people take their precautions and some don't, and then how do we justify that?
What are you proposing, I mean, I, I think I know, but are you?
I'm just proposing to, you know, in, the policy now says you have to use all your sick time and all of your vacation time before you can receive any sick time from somebody that has the huge amount of sick time or COVID pay left.
Yeah, but I don't think that, I could be wrong, but I don't think that pertains to just COVID, I think that is for any medical issue, is it not?
I agree, yes, and that's why I said I didn't want to make an amendment to that, because I'm just talking about COVID. So, I mean, I don't want to make amendment to the policy, but just, just as COVID in general right now.
So in May, when we, or was it April, we, we had a policy that ended.
Yep.
Was that, we didn't change policy, or we just allowed the COVID policy to end, was that what we did?
And, yeah, my other comment might be.
We.
Can we address this as a need? A need be issue, I mean.
Yes, that's.
Because I don't think that we've had any of, have we, have we had some of those issues, Commissioner Arthod, that you're referring to?
Yes.
We have.
Yes.
So, in, when you changed the policy, basically what happened was, so everybody's given eighty hours of COVID leave as of last year, while some people used up their COVID leave last year, some people use some this year and some last year, and then we have some employees that are completely out now. And where we're running into it with is that one of those employees that is completely out had to be out because of their children being. Had to be out because of their children being sick, not because they got COVID yet.
Right.
And so, um, the case in particular that Commissioner Arthod is referring to is actually my own office. Where, um, this employee was very worried about their current situation. And they are being forced, you know, to stay at home and work from home when they can. But I said that I would be willing to offer some of my own COVID hours to cover some of that, so that they don't have to use up all of their. Whatever they have.
Right, and, and you're saying right now you can't do that?
I'm saying I'm not so, yeah.
Can't do it.
Oh.
You gotta, all your sick leave and all your vacation has to be used up before that. And I'm just saying, and, I mean, I don't want to make, revise the policy, but just give the department heads the ability. To be able to make that determination.
I, I think that's reasonable.
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of her choice, you know?
Yeah, I, I agree. I just.
I mean, I'm not saying that, I mean, forcing anybody, but if someone, you know. Is confident and they don't have to worry about their, any kids at home getting it, or the fact that they'd have to stay home because of kids.
I guess I'm taking the chance of if not needing my full eighty hours and I can use my sick and vacation. And that help the employee that's out in my department, since it seems to be as big of a deal as it is.
Thought the eighty hours ended, though. We ended that, though.
No, you, you have eighty hours to use up until it's gone.
We ended the eighty hours in January. We ended it and then COVID started coming back, so then again, and I believe me. Right in there sometime, we opened it back up till December thirty first of this year.
But if you already used your eighty hours or you used twenty last year, and then you only have sixty available for this year. It just depends kind of where you were.
We opened it back up to be used till the thirty first, but we didn't give them another eighty.
And I don't know why we can't do a case by case basis, because realistically, the government sat there and gave money for COVID. Um, stuff, and I feel like having COVID is a direct COVID reason to. Why are we panelizing these employees that want, some of them even want to work from home? But a lot of this stuff, you can only do so much from home. I mean, you can't re, talk to customers from home. We can't do a lot of that stuff. And it's not, I don't think it's fair to those employees necessarily that we're saying this is COVID, but. But we have other things that we'd rather spend the COVID money on.
Hi.
We have the expert here.
I was watching on YouTube and I thought maybe I could come down. Um, there are a couple considerations here. When they came out with this FF CRA bill, you know, they did the eighty hours that we were required to do. Um, that ended, of course, and you all decided to continue that for the rest of this year, which was very generous. I don't know any other county that did that, so for one, we're already being generous. Um, for two, you know. I don't, this eighty hours is not really any of our employees to give to anybody else, is the other thing with it. And then the third thing is every employee, I hate to even bring this up, they have an option to go out and get vaccinated. If you're vaccinated, I know.
Yep, that's.
And if you're vaccinated.
That have COVID right now, so that's kind, that's a very poor, poor choice. That's not.
No, I was just, I was just, let me, gonna say that, um, the CDC guidelines. Say if you're vaccinated, you do not have to stay home and, you know, um, isolate.
If you have COVID, you don't have to stay home with it.
No, what our problems are running into is when the kids get it and they have to stay home.
Have to stay home with your kids anyway, because they have it.
Uh, some of them, some are old enough, yeah. Yeah, but I, um, and it's not even that, like, they stay home with the kids, but then they have to stay home longer than their kids did.
I know that.
Yeah, so that's what I'm talking about.
I mean, so somebody used up their eighty hours, somebody hasn't used up their eighty hours. I believe that is their hours and. I mean, somebody used up their eighty hours, that is not fair for the employee that has some of that eighty hours if they want to give. I believe that is their hour, their, that is their hours to give, if it can help out another employee.
It's just difficult to keep it fair for everybody, because you could have some employees that use.
COVID's not fair.
No, no, I know, but that's why I'm here, is trying to make things fair for everybody, you know?
But that, that's also coming, I mean, you also have to look at, some people are salary, some people are not. It's easier for somebody to say that that's not necessarily okay when their salary, when they could be at home and they can. Dish out their hours. The non-salary people do have to be here those full forty hours. And they have to put in their forty hours, whereas salary people do not. And so I just, I get, I understand that I'm one of those people that's moving over to salary next year. But I just don't feel like we should panelize the people that are not salary. For that, for that same reason, I guess.
You know, it's like you have, might have an employee that uses all their sick and then they use all their vacation and then they have a. Child or, you know, or something happens and then, you know, they have another sickness or say, you know, somebody needs to be hospitalized or something. Then they don't get paid. They're out of vacation and they're out of sick leave, and I just don't think that's right.
Have we ever had a case like that? I would think we deal with that.
There's two coming up.
Coming up, but it hasn't happened, but I, but I would think we can deal with that. There is a case by case thing and to deal with it, we wouldn't leave them high, hanging high and low.
And that's why I agree. I think this should be done case by case with the department head and the portfolio holder to be able to make these decisions. For their departments.
Yeah, because I don't think we want to bring that up in here, because.
That's not fair to them.
Medical stuff does not need to be.
Doesn't have to be brought before there, but I would think we.
My only comment is. Why are you running out of sick time? I, if, or your, your PTO? Is it because you call in sick every Monday? You know, that's, that's a huge part of it.
You know, in this matter, can, you know, with COVID, you could have four kids, three kids and all of a sudden, you know, that's what it's happening now.
I understand. I like where Dean's going, and that is to address it, uh, as a need be, case by case.
Well, that's basically what Carlos said.
That's what I'm doing right now.
I know, and.
But the donating.
I don't know how much time we should spend on this.
But I think we should say it's okay for the department head to say, you can take time from so and so and give it to so and so.
The bookkeeping nightmare.
Um, we, we do have a policy on that and we probably should look at that and follow that, um. I would say.
I think if you just open it up for discussion.
Request it, you know, they have to request.
But you said they can't request it until they use up all their vacation and sick leave.
I read through it, like, the policy or the handbook is, there aren't clear directions on this. It says that they have to use up sick and vacation time. But I know in our leave of absence policy, you don't have to use forty hours of your time. You can leave forty hours in your bank, so I think we need to look at everything. Because a leave of absence that's covered under, if they're covered under the FMLA. Is really you're guaranteeing an unpaid leave of absence. You just continue on their benefits as if they were working.
But some of those people can't. They can't afford a unpaid leave of absence.
I know.
It's COVID. I mean, like I said.
Nobody, nobody can afford to be unpaid, but these are just federal laws, you know, that were. Put in place to protect people's jobs at least. For the twelve weeks.
I think our guidelines would have some wiggle room without having to amend them. Or rewrite them with COVID, is just my opinion.
Shawna Davenport, just a, another aspect of this, when. Joanna presented the emergency sick leave response plan to you. In that response plan, it states that you are going to make all accommodations possible for these employees to work at home. So there have been several instances where it's taken IT numerous days to get these employees online. And some of those employees are out of their eighty hours and we're just not going to pay them? How is that fair for them? It's not. They have to use their PTO. I don't feel like that's appropriate. It's not their fault that we can't get them online, so that's another consideration. We said we're going to make all accommodations possible. You signed off on that. So, that's a double standard. I mean, there's, there's no wiggle room there.
I just think this is harder than it needs to be. It just could be if there's hours in the department. If there, I can see and I agree with Joanna for sick hours to be used up. I don't think someone should. But I don't think they should cut into their vacation.
You just had to hit, use up sick, and then once that was gone, you didn't have to cut into vacation, but. That's, that's my understanding of it, but.
I mean, we still have to go through their requests, but I think it could be left up to the department head and the portfolio holder. If there's COVID, you know, with COVID hours in that department, I don't.
And, and I haven't gotten any requests, you know, for donation of sick time. Alls that I've talked to anybody about is, uh, this, um, EPLSA. Or, you know, the eighty hours and that really isn't, you know, nobody really. Has that to give, I guess. They don't have a bank of these hours.
I mean, we had the COVID twenty twenty that we just gave eighty thousand to and we have the art, I mean. That money. That money is for the employees' protection and the employees to get paid above and beyond anything else that we used it for. Is to protect the employees. That's why that COVID money came and at this point in time with people running out of their COVID pay and running out of their sick leave. And I agree, that's a big injustice that they have to sit at home because they have a sick child with COVID or have to be under quarantine and they don't get paid. That is not right.
And I don't know what the right answer is. Not, you know, you, you, it's not fair to everybody. I'm just saying, if somebody needs sick time, put in the request, you know, and we can put it out there. We haven't even done that yet.
I think the reason why they didn't make the request was because. I was informed that they had to go through their vacation and their sick before they could even apply to request for hours for sick. And they know that one of their children has to have surgery here coming up. And so if they use up all their sick and vacation, then how are they supposed to be there for that kid when they have surgery? Because they're at home without COVID.
And like Shawna said, we are not following the guidelines we made a motion for and approved.
We aren't? The COVID? Which part of it? The?
Yeah, what are we not following? We haven't had anybody that has gone without pay, have we? Somewhere we're not in violation of it.
I think she's talking about the IT accommodations. This employee was, um, not able to remote in from home. When I gave them stuff they could work on from home and, um, consolidated blamed the state and the state blamed consolidated and then. We never got anywhere.
But they did get paid, right?
Well, it hasn't, the payroll hasn't been processed yet. They asked me yesterday how they should put their time in.
But they're not, they're getting paid. We're not cutting any pay.
Well, that's just it. They don't know. They're asked, they asked me this yesterday, is how they should put their time in.
It's not a question that they're going to get paid. It's not a fault of theirs.
Okay, so does that come under sick time? Does that come under vacation? Does that come under COVID? Or does that come under regular hours? That's not giving me any.
Yeah.
It's thinking to be regular hours.
Be no different if their computer shut down here at the courthouse. They're, they're still getting paid. They're here, I mean, yeah.
You guys should come up here if you're going to visit back and forth, so the rest of us can participate.
I just think that our IT should have the capabilities of getting us to where these people can work from home. If they can't, then we're penalizing them because they have the intention to work, but. They can't because we can't, because our IT can't get them on.
I'm just wondering if maybe the commission could give department heads authority to fill in those hours of these employees trying to get online to work from home and it didn't happen. If you can give the department heads permission to let them at least put into their time cards this time that they are trying.
I think so, absolutely.
You have that authority right now. You're, you're department head, I mean.
I mean, you say that until somebody does it.
Why, the sheriff, if he decides he wants to do something special on his deputies or whatever, that's his decision. What's that?
Well, we could just let those COVID hours, like, just flow it out there in Nowhere Land. I mean, that was just a, I just thought that that would be an easy discussion, but I guess not. I guess not.
Can you get another item here?
So how do we want to do it with that employee then?
I will give her authorization to put the hours in for her being stuck on the phone and getting nowhere.
But when they have three kids and they're out of sick and out of vacation time and there's people that could donate COVID, so then. If they have to be gone for a family reason, for medical reason, then they just don't get paid?
No, no, they come, they come in here and we'll get, we'll approve it. I mean, they don't have to come to the board, but I would think they can go to the, to the HR. And personnel and then the department head and decide where you pay them, I mean. Yeah, we're not going to leave somebody without pay, because they're.
But what are you going to, where are you going to use that from is what I'm saying, then, I mean.
What do you mean?
The money is already there in the budget.
You're getting your budget, it's in your bu, budget for salaries. You're making this difficult, uh, a simple thing of just, they're going to get paid.
Mine was simple. You made it, I mean, there's nobody making it difficult. Excuse me. Let's just move on.
Okay, next is another item you have there then. Bill, attorney bill.
Um, there was a motion and a second made in July. We have kept on putting this off month to month to month. Here is another copy if somebody wants it. Um, this had nothing to do with Amanda or Mr. Hope or anybody else at the state's attorney's office. But we all know it was done and it was not done right. And I should not be held accountable as an elected official. I should have had the state's attorney's office backing me. Which I definitely did not. And I do not think I should be held accountable for the bill that I had to go out and get. I look back at it now and there was very, a lot of avenues I could have taken. I could have went to Endor, I could have went to another state's attorney into another county. If I would have had the guidance from our state's attorney. And I had, I didn't have any guidance. And in fact, if you look back at that. And the questions he asked, he didn't ask any other questions to anybody else's. But he sure made sure my attorney was drilled. It was definitely a bias there. And I don't think that I should have to pay for that bias. I have put a lot of work and a lot of hours as in being county commissioner and I appreciate for being elected and I work hard at what I do. But this was above, above and beyond. And I know there was some talk about driving time. And this and that. Well, my windshield time is just as important as everybody else's. My time is important of everybody else's. And I would like to be compensated for the full amount.
Did we ever take action on that motion?
Nope.
No, there was a.
There was a motion.
A motion and a second, and then it was going to be tabled till August and it just.
Never, never got brought back up?
Never got brought back up.
The motion's never been withdrawn?
Nope.
I don't recall drawing, withdrawing it, so I would. Suggest we take action on the motion.
We need to probably clarify a couple of statements. So the reason that we deferred action on the motion when it was made. Was that we wanted, we asked, do we have a policy? Do we have a precedent? Everybody goes like this. They don't know. So I was kind of charged because the state's attorney was, is under my portfolio. I was charged to make a proposed, uh, new policy. I was charged to make a proposed, uh, new policy that would address this specific issue, uh, or these specific issues.
No, no offense, but I believe that should go under discussion. So since there was a motion and a second on the table, I would call for the vote. Or I think the vote should be voted on and then that goes into discussion.
It was my motion, I believe.
Yes.
Uh, I'm not opposed to any discussion, but, uh, you're referring to a, a new policy. Is that right?
Well, if I'm available for, to, to have some discussion, I would like to finish my point.
Okay, fine.
So the, the, the point was we moved forward to make a policy to address this specific issue, okay? And between, uh, Amanda and Joetta and myself, we were ready and there was a kind of a, a, a thing of an agreement or an understanding. I shouldn't say agreement. There was an understanding that the policy would be brought forth for action, change, deliberation, something to do with whatever the commission wanted to do. We would bring that proposed policy forward, forward, digest it, and then we would deal with the issue of the unpaid bills or the, the submitted bills. We finished, the policy took longer than, uh, I would have wished. It took one month longer. I, we were ready to bring this policy forward in September. And then we were told, no, it has to be the bills first, then the policy. And I said, you know what? This was not derived during my term on the commission. I volunteered to, to take this policy forward. We're changing the rules in the middle of the game and if you want to do that, that's fine. But the policy is ready to be submitted. And so that's why it hasn't come here because there was a wish to deal with the, um, the bills submitted first. And that, so, just so that we're clear.
Quick question. Oh, I'm sorry, Brian, go ahead.
It's just like, at this point, we go with the policy was, not what the policy's changed to.
Well, if you go by strict interpretation of the policy, there is no room for reimbursement. It's a vague policy, but if you went to the strictest terms of the, of the policy, current policy, according to our state's attorney, that there would be no opportunity for reimbursement.
But on the same token, all of the missteps that were taken in this process, uh, weren't, uh, the, nobody followed the policy there either.
Well, and, and if you, if you go back and you listen to what I stated at the time of that meeting, I said, yes, there was missteps on both sides. And therefore I was willing to entertain reimbursing, uh, costs in this regard. I'm not in favor of a hundred percent, but I am, uh, certainly because both parties, uh, whether we want to call it the county side and the commissioner's side, both, both parties kind of made some errors in judgment.
I don't believe the co, the commissioners made any errors in judgment because they were first told by the state's attorney that he was just the state's attorney and then they, we were told that he's the state's attorney and HR. I mean, you could tear that policy apart. Because there was so many discrepancies in that policy. And if we would have had the proper representation and not got pushed back and forth and not known where to go, then I would not have this bill hanging over my head.
Okay, well, I mean, the statute is very clear. The state's attorney represents the commission and not individual commissioners. And I think if there was, if there was a gray area in that regard, that's kind of where the, the gray area is. And so that's, uh, that's where I was. Uh, I, I, I don't think the, the moves on either side, the actions on either side were, were, uh, perfect. And that's why I'm trying to, I was trying to work through it, get a compromise, make it work, but that was thrown out and so that's where we're at today.
You know, according to Century Code eleven eleven eleven, we have to be careful on what kind of policies we make because we don't want to, as county commissioners, make a policy that is superseding Century Code either. I mean, Century Code is there to protect the elected official.
Okay. Well, I'd like a copy of that, but I know everything we've talked about, everything we've done in trying to get to a policy has been reviewed by the state's attorney's office and they are our legal counsel.
Any other discussion?
I'll call for the question.
Okay. What exactly is the motion then? So we're clear of that because it's been a few months.
Pardon me?
What exactly is the motion since it's been a few months?
Well, the motion was to make reimbursement, uh, for the legal fee.
Okay. And who seconded that?
I did.
You did? Okay. Okay. Roll call vote. Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
No.
Commissioner Arthod.
Aye.
Probably it's a conflict. I would think you'd probably abstain.
I don't believe it's a conflict because I had to use my own money and it's my own opinion to where I do not believe it's a conflict. I did look into that.
Well, I, you can vote if you want. I'm just saying, the state's attorney at the last time we were there thought, uh, felt that both Commissioner Xander and Commissioner Arthod w- would, uh, kind of need to abstain because it, we have a similar issue there. So, but I'm just reiterating what was stated.
I go no. Motion carries. Hmm, last item here is the county budget and we had our a budget meeting on September fifteenth and I have the auditor go over anything that's changed since our last meeting on September fifteenth.
Okay, so what I kind of did is I just went through and provided with you guys this morning and sent out in the email, things that actually changed with discussions from the last meeting to now. I have had discussions with the state auditors and what they would like to see from Stark County as far as, um, cash and investment estimated amount for the end of twenty twenty one. So I think we'll just start here. It looks like they're starting over there with the requests. So if we start on the requests, um, there was some changes made. I made for the county side, I added in the computers like Neil discussed on the last one. I didn't want to completely levy zero for the computers because we don't want to show it go down to zero. But I did levy the amount that was, I took out the amount that was spent compared to the year before just to make it a, a a more reasonable amount. And I added in there, um, so one seventy eight, three sixty two is the amount that would be coming from the loss of revenue calculation, um, with the ARPA funding for computers for twenty twenty two. Um, then we also have on the bottom where it says weed control. I just put equipment because after speaking with Travis Jepson, the weed control, um, department head, he mentioned he didn't know anything about a side by side in particular. And so I just relabeled it equipment because I think it's up to him and his board what they are or are not gonna purchase. Um, those are really the only ones I made on the funding county request side. And then the other entity requests, um, basically that kind of stayed the same. You know, what's in the guidelines, what would have to come from our loss of revenue calculation. Um, and you just have to kind of decide what you think on those. And they're kind of in order pretty much by the departments. So I think, I don't know where, and everybody wants me to start here.
Well, I mean, we, we, when we walked out of the room under, under the preliminary budget, uh, we, we adopted the preliminary budget. So I don't care if you go page by page, but if you just want to highlight what changes since whatever date that was, September fifteen.
And that's what I kind of got going on.
Okay, so just go from page to page. I'm fine with that. I don't want anybody else.
Okay, so, um, if we do that, let's go ahead and go to the, not that one. That one. Okay, so the, the changes that we kind of have from the last discussions. The biggest thing is with disaster emergency services and, um, E nine one one. The portfolio holder, um, Ms. Arthod contacted me and said that she wanted to put, um, Shauna Davenport, the department head, at, um, eighty five thousand dollars. And with the one dollar an hour raise, um, Shauna was looking at around seventy, I think that would have put her about seventy two. And I guess I will let, um, Ms. Arthod go from there.
Uh, there was a correction on that. It was to be seventy five, not eighty five. So there was a correction on that. So the, what was on it was a range of from seventy five to seventy eight.
So the, I know it's on two pages, so the number that was there was seventy.
So with a dollar an hour, um, if, if she would have got the dollar an hour raise, which is what we were doing across most departments, it would have been, I'll give you that exact number because it's on two pages.
What had happened on there is, I mean, I did, I will take full responsibility. I did miss that. She did not put in for a raise at all. Um, with being the head of emergency emerg, um, services and nine one one, she's compared to the state, which I looked at, she is on the very, very low range. She has, um, has almost a year in. And that's why I went to give her a boost on her wage. At the seventy five thousand dollars, at that raise, you're gonna have sixty thousand on the emergency management side and fifteen thousand on the nine one one. The seventy seven thousand dollar range, you're gonna have sixty one, six hundred on the emergency management side and fifteen thousand four hundred on the nine one one side.
Okay, so at a dollar an hour raise, that would put Ms. Davenport at seventy two thousand seventy two dollars. Just so everybody kind of knows what that total is. And then, um, I do know that Joetta, our human resource person, did look into, um, comparisons. Did you have anything you want to say about that, Joetta, at all?
Uh, yeah, Carla and I spoke yesterday and she came and did look and, you know, we looked at the median range and, um, we felt the seventy five to seventy seven would put her right in the median there.
Do we need to do these corrections by motion or can we just do the? I'm good with going with the seventy five on there. Is that a, do we need to?
Well, you approved preliminary budget, so these are the changes since the preliminary budget. So we, we can't just accept it all at the end. Or if you want to accept it for this one and then we move on to the next one, I think.
I think that's what we have to do.
Yeah.
Well, are you, uh, is that what we're gonna do with this one?
I think with this one, yes, because there is a change from the preliminary. Would you agree, Jim, on that? I mean, this is.
It could go, you could do either way. You could, you could do it individually or you can make a motion to cover them all at the end.
Okay, but could they say at the end if they did the, where they approved the budget, can they say with certain amendments and then change what they want to change or does it need to be? Because we're kind of running into that where some of them are a little bit different, like we're discussing this, where some commissioners are more at seventy eight, some are seventy eight, you know, seventy five.
Well, ultimately, the commission is gonna have to decide what it is, how it is expressed or whether things are voted on singly or completely. That's
Let's do individual motions, get it done.
Individual motions, I would agree.
Yes, I agree. So is that a motion to make the seventy five, is that a motion or a what?
I'll make that a motion. Somebody got a second?
Second.
A motion, a second.
Just quick discussion. I, I, I understand there was some lapses in communication, but you know, we, we've tried to open this budgeting process up and make it, you know, it used to be very tight. We tried to make three meetings and I, I, I'm, I'm full in support. I'll support the seventy five. I just wish we would have followed the process is all, so.
I agree. I'm sorry. That was my fault. Hundred percent as a department, I mean, portfolio holder, I missed it, so I'm sorry.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed. Motion carries. Go on to the next change and.
Okay, the next change that we had, um, was on the, while the IT one, basically, it, basically I just moved the computers and updates. Because that's something that now could come from our loss of revenue calculation from the ARPA funding. So I left in that amount for seventy nine, nine forty six so that we did still have an amount in that budget line item. And then I just moved over the one seventy eight, three sixty two to potentially come from the ARPA funding. To bring down our, our, um, county mills for the taxpayers. I think after discussions with, um, Commissioner Messer, we potentially would like to maybe even use some of that funding to pay for the computer updates over a couple of years. And, um, so those are some of the discussions that we, that we had. So that was it for the IT one. And then we can discuss it more when we get to the actual contribution sheet if you want. Okay, and then county park. Alls I did was just bring that number down for fair event activities to a hundred and twenty thousand. Because she did not, um, after speaking with Lisa, she did not need, you know, the hundred and sixty, so I put it at a hundred and twenty. And that still includes the contribution request from the Rough Rider Commission for eighty four. And then all the other changes that were made were on the, um, sorry, were on the contribution sheets. Just depending on what you would like to sponsor or not sponsor. And then the other biggest thing that I would really like to go over is that general fund worksheet that I passed out that has the levy amounts on it. This one right here. That one on top, Carla. Okay, so I, I spoke to I spoke to the state auditors and something that Stark County really got panelized for last year was, um, reserve amounts in the general fund. And if you look at that amount, it says, um, highlighted ten million dollars. That's on the basis that the commission is willing to move some of this money that is in the current amount. Because if I put it at the current amount that is in, um, most likely gonna be in there at the end of twenty twenty one because it is an estimate. Um, it's going to tell me that I do not need to levy any tax dollars. Um, because that's the amount that goes in there. And so that amount, that overage that we're talking about of about, you know, eight to nine million dollars is supposed to be put into its own fund to be used for projects that are coming up here in the next five years. Whether it's the, um, I know there was plans with the fair grounds building potentially. There's been, you know, talk of a cou, the courthouse needing maintenance as far as our, um, downstairs, what is it, our heaters? There was a couple of different things with the courthouse. And then, um, also, you know, road and bridge, if there was some stuff coming up there. Basically that money needs to go into some. Basically, that money needs to go into some sort of funding, get it out of the general. And we need to kind of agree onto something, because if I put the actual number, which I'm going to, as is, it's going to basically tell the state auditors that we are levying for tax dollars that we are not supposed to be levying for. And so I'm, I'm kind of just up in hands here with the commission on what they would like to do as far as that goes. I did propose doing the different funds. I also proposed on the up and down worksheet, kinda moving some stuff around as far as giving a tax break potentially. I think what I looked at doing overall on everybody's statements, it would be about an eight-point-two-two mil tax break altogether. That was another option, and I'm just opening it up to see what you guys would like to...
Well, so I can kinda address the issues that are brought to Karen's attention. So when we walked out of this room on September fifteenth, we were going to do a general, uh, potential, I don't wanna confuse words, but we were gonna levy seven million, three-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars on, onto the property tax rolls for our general levy, which reflected in the statements that went out last month at the end of the year. The, the conversation was, let's not raise property taxes, let's do what we can and see if we could levy the same amount of dollars. Now, I understand there's an increase in valuation and, and those kinda things, but we were, my goal was to try to get it down to six million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, seven-hundred dollars. And then Karen had the conversation with the state auditor and the state auditor, you know, give back and forth, and that's where the sheet that you have right here, where it says that reserve should be the ten million, correct? Which would in fact take the levied amount down to five million, sixty-eight thousand dollars. Okay, so that's two, that would be a deduct in property tax of two million, three-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars, plus minus. And so my concern, immediate concern was, everybody's gonna jump up and down, be happy, but we're two-point-three million dollars away from where we were fifteen days ago. And two-point-three, and, and if you take a dollar an hour, excuse me, salary, those kinda things, we've been bumping up our expenditures about seven-hundred thousand dollars a year. You could do that kinda stuff. All of this, three years, we're done. We have no money. And we're gonna have to turn around and take our levies up by not just ten mils. It's gonna end up being fifteen or sixteen because of inflation. And I don't know if that's what the, the, the property tax owner, I mean, I'm a property, this would benefit me, but I'm just saying from county long-term planning, I would like to see a, 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 a number that we can sustain. That, that's all, that's where I'm at. And, and so I think, Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking for where that mil levy should be, is that correct?
Yes, so me putting it at the amount that I'm putting in it, because you also have to look at everybody's tax statements. They're gonna have a lot more than just county, you know, it says county, but that includes, you know, the special road and bridge, the farm-to-market, includes a lot of other ones. So while the county, I was looking at reducing, reducing the general by ten-point-one-four, overall, it's gonna be an eight-point-two-two reduction. It's just, basically what we're coming down to is, is the commission going to set aside these funds for something that they have a plan for, because something that the state auditors were really trying to get as a point across is that the county is not a savings account for the taxpayers. And they were really concerned with some counties that were doing that, and we do have other counties in North Dakota that are levying zero dollars for their general this year to accommodate for that. Um, while I don't wanna completely levy nothing, I just think that maybe we need to get on a little bit more closer of a scale or
Well.
what we're not gonna get panelized for.
Right, and, I mean, the, the county commission is the ultimate financial responsibility for the people. The, and I've, and I, I remember Mr. Hope making some detailed comments about a year ago when this conversation took place, when that audit was, was released. And so I asked him to refresh our memories and our minds in regards to the statute that was adopted in nineteen ninety-three that, that dealt with this, and he can elaborate on it, but not one ounce of testimony had anything to do with jurisdictions on the, the, the seventy-five percent being the, the number. Everything had to do with other topics. It went, it started in the senate, went through the senate, it went to the, to the house, and those kinda things. And so, you know, there's a statute there that's really vague and tough to interpret, and so we as a commission have to decide where do we wanna be? Do, you know, if, if, and so that, that's kinda, and I asked Jim to kinda elaborate a little bit on that, so.
Well, I'd be glad to, but I wanna, I wanna make certain that the comments that I make, these are observations. You are dealing with statutes that are not particularly clear. What you have is the state auditor's office has kind of in the past two or three years has decided to become the enforcer of this particular statute. It's an interesting statute. As Mr. Messer mentioned, this was passed in nineteen ninety-three. There is no legislative history on this particular provision. The statute's in eleven-twenty-three dash oh-two. I don't wanna just bore you with that particular detail, but it is interesting that that particular statute directs its responsibilities to the county auditor. There are other statutes that appear to conflict with that, that are addressed to the county commission. And ultimately, as Mr. Messer said, it is not the county auditor that determines the budget or the mil levy. It is the county commission that makes that determination. The, I did speak with Burley County and Cass County regarding the budget process. October tenth is our drop-dead date for establishing the mil levy. The budget itself can be amended at any time. The budget is almost like a, a living creature. I think we've got, not we, you, the commissioners. Who am I kidding? It's the commissioners. It's, it's you, it's the commission. You have a number of options to deal with this situation. Number one, you can tell the state auditor, thanks but no thanks, we disagree. We, we disagree with your interpretation of the statute, and we don't think you have any authority to penalize us at all. You can give us a black eye by coming out with a audit report that chastises us, but we completely disagree with your interpretation of the statute. That's an option. Second option is, yes, auditors, we will, we will look at this seventy-five percent as a, as a guideline, and we will work to get there on our own time, consistent with the needs of Stark County. With all due respect to the state auditor's office, we believe we are the ones that are responsible for our budget and best able to manage the needs of Stark County and not the state auditor's office. You can, as Ms. Richard mentioned, you can create a new fund. I did touch, touch base with the state's attorney up in Montreal County, and they have created a sinking fund to deal with, with road projects. We didn't get into details, so the mechanism of that is, is beyond me. You can reduce your tax levy. You can do a combination of moving money around or, or reducing the levy. One that's interesting that just crossed my mind last night is the, and, and, and again, again, I don't mean to bore you, and I'm just, but I'm going to anyway. And I'm just going to, just, I was just thinking out loud, the statute reads as, as, as follows. If I can, if I can find it here, the, the language is actually kind of interesting. And it addresses, here's, it, it provides that the county auditor would, shall prepare an annual budget for the general fund. Each special revenue fund, each debt service fund of the county in the form prescribed by the state auditor. Then it says the budget must set for specifically, and it goes through a number of items that have to be done. And then number nine, the amount of cash reserve for the general fund and each special revenue fund not to exceed seventy-five percent of the appropriation for the fund. And discussing it with, with Cass County in the morning, they said, yeah, what's appropriation mean? And so I just thinking, I was thinking out loud is, well, what would happen if you took that cash reserve and you created an appropriation in the general fund? Then it's appropriated. And you would call it your line item, you would call it contingencies, emergencies, unforeseen items. Well, now it's in your general fund and it's appropriated. And so you basically would clean out your cash reserve fund and create it, you move it into an appropriation that can be spent or not spent. I just use the example of the state's attorney's office. If Ms. Engelsdahl were to hear and ask for four attorneys, and you approve four attorneys, you appropriate monies for four attorneys, doesn't mean she has to spend it. She's just, she can use three if she wants. Now, I'm not saying that's, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, I mean, I just thought of this last night. I just thought of it last night. I remember last year, it was during the caucus this meeting, and it was, is a rowdy one, and I think all of us regret it. But I know it was brought forth, the possibility of having the county hire a private auditor to do the auditing of the books. That might be a step in the right direction. I remember, and I just, I'll just leave it at that. That may be a step in the right direction. The point I'm, I want to make here, and this was confirmed in my discussions with, with Burley and, and Cass this morning, was that, and it, it was consistent with my interpretation of the statute is the drop-dead date for the mil levy is October tenth. That's it. Your budget, you can amend your budget. I mean, you can amend the current year budget if you want to. So you've got some flexibility here as how you structure your budget, but your mil levy, you have to decide today. And I'm just, you know, and here I'm, I'm hedging that the statutes are not particularly clear. This particular statute, I know that the auditor's office is relying on, it was passed in nineteen ninety-three, and it just sat there for literally decades. And so my, the question is, and I don't know the answer to this, there are many things about this that I don't know the answer to. But how was this statute interpreted in the first five years after it was passed? What about the next five? What about the next five? I remember last year when Commissioner Alken was talking about it, this was never a, it was not a big deal. It was something that I think was mentioned, if I remember, and I, my memory's not what it used to be, but it was something that the auditor would just kinda say, yeah, well, you got this, you know, something like that. But then in the last, the, the last audit, as you know, we all just, it was a real black eye that got put on the, on the county by that. And I thought that was very unfair. But politics is a contact sport. That's how it is. I, I, I get it. So those are the observations I have. And you've got flexibility with respect to the budget, but the levy, that's, that's gotta be done today.
That was interesting. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Well, I don't know if Karen wants to add anything. I, I, like I said, I'm, I'm, I, I'd, I'd hate to put us down a path where we go to this position where we have to do a big jump somewhere down the road. And, okay. And I'm open to whatever that number is, but if, if, just doing some quick calculations. So instead of levying seven-point-three or the five-point-oh-six-eight, let's just pick a number in the middle. Just say it's six million or whatever. That would reduce property taxes by almost a million dollars across the county. It would reduce, I'd let Karen do the real math, but I think it would reduce our line item, well, it's not a number that...
Overall, about negative eight-point
Two, two.
Three-six?
Yeah, but the one where you have the fifty-four mils, if you, if you put six million in up on the first line, the general, for, for...
Well, if you're talking about five mils, then just take five mils. You know, like if you're talking about only five mils instead of ten, you can just add five mils on there. So we'd be at fifty-nine-point-two-two roughly.
Okay, and, right, whatever that works out to be. I'm just saying, I think that's reasonable because it's sustainable. That's where I'm at. I wanna be able to sustain this over a longer period of time than a couple of years.
So with dropping these mils, I mean, what does that do to our reserve?
That's exactly, yeah.
Because I mean, I know that he had talked about...
I like, I like his last scenario where we appropriate this money into a special line item.
Yep.
And leave things going as it is, because in a couple of years, as things change, we're gonna burn it up anyway.
Well, just...
And now we give the people a false hope that we're dropping the taxes in a year, in two years, all of a sudden we raise it twice as much.
I, if, if I could, I really wanna, wanna caution. I mean, this idea about putting it into the, the general fund and appropriating it, that's Jim Hope thinking out loud. You know, I mean, there, there may be other statutes, auditors may, not just the state auditor, but private accountants might look at that and say, you know, I'm not so sure about that.
Either that one or the second option that you gave is the one that...
You know what, the state auditors, I mean, with the state auditors, I understand that, but they, I mean, they are, they are our state auditors, but they, I mean, they're, they're own private auditors. They don't really...
So I think we can do it the way Jim is talking about doing it. Their biggest thing in my discussions that I've had with the state auditor's office is that the county can't just sit on money. They have to, they wanna earmarked or appropriated towards stuff that's coming up here in the next five years. They don't want you to just sit on the money in, like a rainy day fund. We can't have rainy day funds, is what they're saying. And, and I think that it's fine either way that the commission wants to go with it, but just know that if it comes back and, and it's publicized and everything like that, it, it's coming back to you, because I did give you your options as what they want us to do versus what we think is okay to do.
Well, I, and I, I also agree with Mr. Hope in the fact that when this audit was publicized last year and I was first elected, we were given the opportunity to talk to Heath at the state auditor's office. I have my email. I, I checked the other day, and I had a detailed conversation with him. And he, he basically, you know, walked us through, and I said, if we do this stuff and we, I keep the, the, I don't wanna use the exact words, but if we end up, because you budgeted about a million deficit spending for this year, and if we continue to do that, is that an appropriate, appropriate faction? And he told me specifically, I don't have any problem with that. So why is he, you know, he's kinda changing his mind here. He's, because he's streaming you and, and leading you in a different path than he led me, and I believe Mr. Zander also had a conversation with him as well. And so that's where a little bit of, of the frustration comes.
I just don't want Stark County to have another audit like...
And I don't either, but I also wanna be a, a good steward of the money and, and... And so I think to answer Commissioner Arthod's question, it would take the reserve and do a quick calculation to confirm this, Karen. It would take the reserve number...
It'd be about a million dollars. Five mils is about a million dollars.
A million dollars higher than that, than where we are on the general fund sheet. Any other discussion?
I mean, the, I, I wanted, I mean, we wanna cut taxes for the taxpayer, but we also don't wanna deplete our funds, so then in five years, all of a sudden, the taxpayer gets this huge amount of money that they have to now pay.
And that's what's gonna happen.
And that's what's gonna happen if we deplete our funds.
And it won't take five years.
It won't.
Yeah.
Closer to three, clo- two to three years.
Yeah, I was thinking, yeah. And then, then we got...
And then all that big money that this county was rat-holing is all gone.
Yeah.
It's already about halfway as gone from what it was last year.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? All that fine advice you had from Mr. Messer, do you have a motion for us? Well, what I'd like to do, since I have a medical deal here soon, is if we could do, per the statute that Mr. Hope says, establish line one, the general fund mil, and then establish line, the county one, and then adopt the budget based on those numbers, and then we can deal with the special requests. Is that, is that appropriate?
Yeah, you can, yeah, I basically just, well, I need you to approve the county budget itself, too.
Yes.
And then you can amend it later on, but it still needs to be approved today as presented.
Okay, so my question would be, is if we do that as presented, let's say hypothetically, we drop five mils, and then we go through, which of these do we need to, would be enacted? The ones that are in the levies and included or the ones in... Or the ones, or could we come back at a point where it says, these are not included in levies? And we would, would put it in the request page?
The one on the 2022 contribution sheets are ones that are included in the levy itself.
Okay.
And so those kind of need a decision, because that's going to affect the levy number directly.
The levy number is a crucial thing today.
Kind of gone through these on the spreadsheets, on the contribution sheet, correct?
The, the contributions ones are, this is the ones that are, I levied for.
Right.
Yes, and the estimated tax statements. So I think you just need to look through there, was there any that you had any questions about, or you potentially wanted to take off? Or weren't comfortable with, that's kind of.
So the 84 for the Rough Rider Commission is a $40,000 deduct from the previous year? Or no?
No, 84,000, actually $4,000 more than what they got the previous year.
Something in the back of my mind, we were talking about a $40,000.
For County Park, I just added the 80,000 onto the 80,000 that was there before. Apparently that whole amount had always gone to the, the Rough Rider Commission. And so I took off 40,000 of that, I just brought down their fair activities to 120.
Okay.
Because when I was doing the levies, nothing had been determined on the Rough Rider Commission's request. And so that 84,000 is in the County Park budget of that 120, 84 of that would be going to the Rough Rider Commission. So they did ask for 4,000 more than what they got in previous years, is up to the commission on how much you want to give them. That is something that, you know, is included in our levy, if you want to do 75, or if you want to do some other amount, then I would just need to change it.
I thought there was a consensus, I just don't remember what it was.
We did talk about dropping them. That was my understanding anyway.
We talked about dropping the County Park Fair Activities number, which we did, by 40,000.
Okay.
But that's not the Rough Rider Commission directly. That you guys can just decide on, if, how much you want to give them, is basically where we're at.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the Stark County Fair Association, you dropped 40,000.
Not the Fair Association.
Well, right underneath you have park funds dollar, including parking, okay, so where's that one at?
Wait, okay, the Rough Rider Commission for 84,000 is in the County Park budget line item.
No, but right over here, this, oh, okay, right, okay, I understand.
So just so the commission knows, the ones that are kind of usually an every-year thing, we'll start at the top. Richardson Taylor Ambulance, a 10,000, that's usually what we always give them. The Dickinson Area Ambulance, same thing. The Fair, Stark County Fair, they get half a mil. So that's where that 101, 930, 10 comes from. The Rough Rider Commission, it's your choice, how much you want to give them, they requested 84,000. It is up to you how much you want to give them. Roosevelt Custer Regional Council, 33C670, that is also a request type thing. On, you know, if you want to change that number, you can. Dickinson Area Chamber of Commerce, that's how much is kind of set in stone, that's how much we pay them. Yes, dues. And then domestic violence and rape crisis, and then the domestic violence and rape crisis family connection, those are two amounts that we have been giving to them every year. If you want to do different amounts, you just need to say something for those ones. Best Friends Mentoring for 15,000, that's the same thing, we give that to them every year. Same thing with Community Action, Imagination Library, Richardson Healthcare Foundation. And then that Stark County Historical Society was what they had brought forward at a previous commission meeting, and they want to do that Stark County project with the archiving, and that's what that amount is. Southwest District Health Unit, that's 750, is something that's kind of set. County Jail Fund, so Billings County JPA Paramedic, that's the amount that we got for that. And Sunrise Youth Bureau gets one mil. So it's just, if the commission wants to change any of these amounts, that's, now is kind of the time to bring that up, or if you have questions about where it's going.
Okay, for the essence of time, can we go ahead and, I would move that we fund 38,350 to the Historical Society.
Well, you can do them all in one, one sheet, it's just if you wanted to change any.
I don't know what the wishes were on the other, the, the Rough Rider Commission, or the, what did we give Rough Rider Commission last year?
80,000.
And what about Roosevelt?
Actually, they didn't get their, they didn't get their 80,000 last year, no, it was the year before. Yep, so they got 80,000 for this year's.
And did we give them 80, or they just went and submitted bills and then we paid it? To where we didn't give them the 80?
I don't think they got the full 80.
It was up to.
Well, they submitted their bills, they submitted 80,000 worth of bills, yeah.
I thought we just diverted that fund to the rodeo, last year you did.
In 2020, so when you did the 2019 budget, you gave the 80,000 to the, the other rodeo in 2020. But then this year, they had Rough Rider Commission days, and then you also gave them money, is the way I understood it.
They just did it different, to where they billed Lisa, instead of just handing them a check for 80, they just billed Lisa up to that.
Lisa go through the bills and make sure everything is applicable, and then we give them a check once they turn in their bills, is how we did it this year.
Yep.
I, I don't know why we're increasing that, even though it's a.
I was just thinking that too, it's 24,000.
They, they just requested 84.
Yeah, just leave it at 80.
80.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good with that. And the Roosevelt Regional, is that the same number from previous year?
That's been the same for, ever since I've been on the board, yeah.
Okay, so I'm okay with that, and I'm okay with the Stark, so can we adopt this page then? Are we, if those were the only three that were different?
So if we adopt this page, but then we still have the ability, if we have money like for Domestic Violence Center, if they come in and need a little bit more, we have that ability?
Yep, that's totally, yep. So maybe you just want to start by adopting the 2020, 2022 contributions page, and then we'll go from there.
So moved.
With the, with the amendments.
Right, with the 80, the 84 to 80 on the Rough Rider Commission, and the, well, that.
That was it.
That's the only change.
Somebody, just give me a quick refresher on DCS Imagination Library. What is that again?
I'm pretty sure, isn't that the mobile library?
Yeah, I, yeah, I believe that's the bus, yeah, the thing that goes other around the colony.
Those are the small communities.
Yeah, all right, I thought it was more than that, but fine. Okay.
Okay, had a motion, who was the second, who had the second on it? Did you have the second?
I don't think I did, but I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, was opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and then if we just want to, I don't know if you guys want to go over the county requests versus the other entity requests. We can wait on the ARPA funding if you like, but some of this stuff is included, maybe just want to do the county ones today.
Okay, highlight those for us, please.
Okay, the county ones is the one that says 2022 Funding County Requests. It says at the top of the sheet.
Oh, I have two pages that are identical.
Oh, oops, I missed one on yours.
Okay.
Okay. So these are the ones that came from within the county. We have the Sheriff's Department, three cars for 150,000 for 2022. The Auditor's Department, the online minutes for 13,499. We have the computers that we're looking at, Above and Beyond, 178, 362, that kind of is taking some of the pressure off the mill levy by being able to use that loss of revenue calculation. Then we have the ones that actually meet the guidelines for the ARPA funding. We have the County Park restroom facility, the portable bleachers. And then right here, Special Projects County, so this money for these ones would have to come out of our Special Projects line item, which would bring the reserve down a little bit.
Going back up to restroom, County Park restroom, I'm okay with, what's portable bleachers all about?
So the portable bleachers, they're going to be used at the speed, the motorsport park. But they can pick them up and like, they can move them, because they don't really have any bleachers out there, correct? And.
On one side, they have bleachers on the spectator side, yeah.
Where's Lisa, would I need her?
You know, I, until somebody shows me that the current seating is not adequate, I, I just, I don't.
These portable bleachers were for a reason to put in, because there wasn't adequate seating, because of the, having to move some bleachers.
It's right here, so.
For motocross, yes, it was something to do with motocross.
When I sent to over.
Oh, I see.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
It was a relief, let us write that.
Yep.
Okay, currently the motors.
Yes.
Currently, the motorsports facility is lacking in portable bleachers, which could be utilized on both tracks, the pole-style bleachers cost 62,000 and could be rented out, similar to McKenzie County's portable system. That's what she put in her packet for explanation. I also know that if we did potentially, you know, start building that fairgrounds building, we could potentially use the portable bleachers to get us by until they put permanent bleachers in. So there are a couple of different options. Actually, Lisa is calling me right now.
Thank you. I'm, I'm good with it.
You're good with that, okay.
I'm good with it, thank you.
And then the, the special projects would have to come out of that kind of reserve funding, that's up to everybody, I put those kind of down there. And then weed control equipment, that also is up to the board, we can do that out of excess funding too. So these are just the county requests for 2022.
Well, I would say put the, the 178, you want, I thought you were going to run that through ARPA, or are you running that through special?
If you look, that's actually being ran through loss of revenue calculation for 2021, yeah.
So that's an ARPA?
Yep.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is just deal with the ones that are, that affect our budget, so we can adopt the budget, and then we can come back and deal with the ARPA requests to include that one. Unless there's, do we, do we need to act on, for example, that one right now? The 178 or the 50,000 for the weed?
Well, that money is going to be needed in the budget.
That's right, we have to.
Okay.
Like, I mean, even though it's coming from ARPA funding, it's still going to, it's still in an IT budget. So that's why we kind of need to decide on these county ones, we can wait on the other ARPA ones if you want.
So this is the ARPA money that is going to be coming out that we, that we need to take watch for, so we don't run short on our other requests?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the top two for the park board, County Park, the, the restrooms and the portable bleachers, I'm okay with. The, the signs and the fence and, and the motorsport signage, I guess.
We do need a sign there, because somebody copyrighted this name that was there, we need new signs out there.
Wow, okay.
So the reason why I have them under Special Projects County is because they are adding value to those things in their, in their, you know, they are special projects, so that, that can be paid for out of that reserve, if you're fine with that. They're just not ARPA items.
Has anybody brought forth any discussion on capital improvements account for these, these facility improvements that we're talking about?
We do have a capital improvements account, but right now, the things that are coming out of there are things like the excess money that we have to pay for the jail, or any sort of, any need as far as other fixes, it's not just, it's above and beyond capital improvement, so if we could pay for some of these things out of the Special Projects account, we wouldn't necessarily have to use that capital improvement money, because we're trying to get our overall general fund number down a little bit, and this would help bring that down, we can't just push everything to capital improvement, though.
Even though it might be capital improvement.
I mean, some of it, yeah, it is capital improvement, and that's totally up to the board.
What was the reason for that motorsport chain link fence, I don't remember, I remember.
Because it, property we bought there, they had to change the fence.
I was thinking, it was okay.
I mean, that's kind of on the bottom of her, you know, wishlist. I think the biggest thing was the signage, the pedestals, and the restroom facility are by far the biggest things.
The fencing is pretty important, though, to keep people on our property.
I mean, if you, oops, if you had to like, put it in order.
Look for a motion to approve this 2022 funding for county requests.
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? Motion carries. Anything else?
Yeah, we just need an overall budget approval or questions about the budget.
Okay, any questions on the budget, if not, I'll look for a motion to approve our budget.
And what are we exactly approving, are we approving the proposed that was highlighted, are we approving? That's the other thing, too.
We still didn't make our final approvals on the other, on Jessica Clifton or Karen's amount of raises. We had talked about them, but we never made a final motion on those or approval.
They were approved initially on the 15th, or there wasn't any changes on that, we're bringing up the changes.
I mean, we can, now's the time for discussion on, on the budget, so if you want to discuss those, Commissioner Arthod, you are more than welcome to bring those up, now's the time, before we do the final approval.
Well, I just, I didn't think that we, I didn't think that we made the final approval on those raises yet from.
We didn't discuss it today.
The final, who's being, final, who's making today, the final approver today.
Yeah, I just didn't put it in a separate packet, because those weren't changes from the last meeting. You know what I'm saying, like, the stuff that I, I added to yours today was changes from the last meeting that we had on the 15th.
Okay.
So now, now is definitely the time, if you want to talk about any of that.
Commissioner Zander, you and I had talked a little bit about that, do you have any input on that with Ms. Clifton?
Well, and I don't have my preliminary budget information with me, so I'm not up to speed on that, but are you okay where that's at? Is there any, I, I thought we talked about that about a week or two ago, right?
Commissioners and Board, I'm Jessica Clifton, the Veteran Service Office. I had discussions with different options of what the commissioners would like. I talked to Ken, as my portfolio holder, and with Karen and Dean. And we just left the proposed per-county line item in there, and it goes to the vote for the commission. And then, of course, moving me to salary.
That's correct.
So my question, Jessica, is, and I apologize for not following up with you from that discussion, are you, are you comfortable where it's at now?
Yes, of course.
I thought so, so.
I just, I guess I looked into it too, and I, I mean, I think that she definitely does need a raise, I think that, I mean, we get compensation from those other counties when she's there, but then if she's going to move to salary.
So Commissioner Arthod, I don't get compensation from those other counties when I'm there, it's a yearly contract.
Stark County gets the compensation, because you're working there, so Stark, you know, they pay Stark County your wage, is kind of in a way. I mean, Stark County gets it, so, because you're not working in Stark County that day, you're in Billings County. So that's just kind of what I mean on that.
So I bring in that revenue, Stark County gets that revenue that's brought in, yeah, that revenue is not reflected into my salary.
No, because you're working there, so then the county keeps, okay.
Well, money, the contract is revenue for Stark County.
Correct.
And that revenue, this whole discussion started because the extra responsibilities, duties, weekends, nights, holidays, that you are, that you are working, that you essentially weren't being compensated for. We wanted to address that by taking a portion, a small portion of each county's. We wanted to address that by, um, taking a portion, a small portion of each county's. Contract and and awarding it to your, to you as. Reimbursement for those efforts. And in the event that one of our contract counties would drop out, it would be reflected in your. Reimbursement that as as a county dropped out or a county increased. So that's where all this discussion started. And. I guess I thought that we were. Had that all resolved, but I'm.
I agree to a wage, but I mean, or increase, I think nine thousand is a bit much. I mean, I would.
Okay.
I would go for the seventy five. I mean.
I guess I would need to look at what my, um.
Or I shouldn't say that because I don't know your exact, I would agree with a five thousand is what I said, you know, the raise on that. I just don't agree with the nine.
So Commissioner Arthod, would you not want me compensated per county and just do a salary adjustment of five thousand onto my. Salary now and then just not do those per county. Compensation line items. And just make a salary adjustment of the total five thousand and take away those line items.
Right now, there's a second, so you have your main line item that's at seventy three, four forty four, eighty, and that's with the dollar an hour raise. And then you have your second line item that is at nine thousand, and that's for the different counties. Jessica's basically asking if you just want to move the number of nine thousand down to five thousand? Or are you talking about just adding five thousand on to the seventy three? Or what, what you're going after here?
I would prefer that we just, uh, reduce the nine to five.
Yes.
As Commissioner Arthod, and again, if we pick up more counties, that number would. Would be reflected, okay? I don't think we're gonna pick up any more counties because, you know, we can only do so much, but I, I know.
I don't know. I had a lot of commissioners talk to me at the Association of County meetings.
But we can't say no. I mean.
Well, they can come to her. To Star County, whether we like it or not.
Yes.
It's not a, up to us to reject or accept veterans.
Yep.
The veteran makes the phone call. She's providing the service.
That's right.
Even from the other counties?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we can look for.
Oh, you still want that five thousand per line item? I'm just wondering how you're gonna break that out because right now I serve three counties and the five thousand. I mean, I'm just thinking in my head, if I drop a county. Okay.
Yeah.
Do a percentage calculation, however that works out.
Sure, okay.
I I know veterans in King County, Washington, that you're servicing. Yeah. Don't I?
So do you want to make a motion then to do it to five thousand?
Yes.
Is that what you're?
I'll make a motion, or Ken, if you, your portfolio holder.
All right, go ahead, you got it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, have the increase to five thousand.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Arthod.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Chair votes no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
What was the other one you had?
Um, Ms. Richards? We had went on that and went to. The eighty five, which I think is a little bit excessive. When we opened the position, it was at eighty two. Nothing was hired at that point in time. By that committee. I think she does a great, very good job. I just think eighty five is a little bit high. I would agree. From what she makes now, I would agree to eighty. And to look at it year by year as time is, as time served. I think we're kind of setting a precedent for people coming in and getting elected as department heads to start off at such a high position.
Well, if I might add to those comments, uh. I don't believe that, uh, Ms. Richards, and what do you've got? You've been here nine months now? Is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
So. I know that when you first began your employment here, your. Position was, uh. Your your current position is considerably different. But on the other hand, your. Salary has increased significantly from your original. Position to your current position and that, you know, it it would, it would look like a. Uh, a huge increase in salary for someone that hasn't even been here a year. And so I would concur with with the, uh. The salary, um, suggested by, uh, Commissioner Arthod at eighty.
I'll make that motion. To.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Discussion on that. I realize that, but I don't see people lining up for this position either. I don't think, since I'm from the, even doing in the private sector for the job she's doing, that I would compare those salaries to this, I think she's in line.
Yeah, we, I mean, I don't know how you can go below what you offered when you put it out there for public consumption or for, um.
Because there was nobody that was hired at that point because of that salary.
You know, and kind of defeating your argument. I mean, if if no one was interested at eighty two, whatever the number was, then. How can we come back and say that that position is only worth eighty? You know what I mean?
No one was given the position.
So let's readvertise it for a hundred and twenty. Well, let's deal with the real world here. Yeah, let's, let's deal with the real world, you know.
Nobody was offered the salary at the position it was opened for because they didn't feel that there was adequate. So it wasn't, nobody was offered that that position because there wasn't adequate training.
Understood.
Is what I mean on that part.
Okay.
Okay, but you, your comment about making a precedent about department heads going into salaries. The last discussion that we had on the September fifteenth meeting, I wasn't even talking about all department heads. I was talking about elected officials particularly, that both elected officials, the sheriffs and the state's attorneys stepped into the previous elected official salary. When they took on the position, and I feel like that that needs to be taken into account when that's different than just a department head over an elected official. And then you also have to look at, when I was hired on as the deputy auditor, I was informed that I would have quite a grace period to. Not only learn the position that many auditors have taken many, many years to step into the auditor position. But I was literally given two months and then had the responsibility of the auditor position. So I think that maybe those are things to be taken into consideration because when I go out into the private sector. And I do go with my financial background and everything like that with the degrees that I'm still paying for. They are willing to pay you for your worth, and people are not lining up for this job, and you did not hire anybody at that time. At that amount because there wa- there was, that you say they're not qualified. But there also was, you wanted somebody that had been in the auditor's office previously, and that's why you had Lynn brought in. And Lynn couldn't handle the stress at that time of the auditor position, which is why I had to step up after two months.
I don't think it was a fact, I don't think we can bring Lynn in. I just think that we are, I mean, I think you're doing a great job. You have a great education. You have a great background. I mean, I know what the private sector, we have to all the realize this is the taxpayer money that we're dealing with, and I think. The wage that we are offering is a great wage for having the amount of time you've been auditor. And I mean, year by year, we can go along and keep giving raises, but I think that eighty thousand is a very good number for. You to have be auditor for the seven months.
Call for the question.
Okay. Roll call vote and Commissioner Arthod.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
No.
Chair votes no. Motion carries.
I have, I'm like ten minutes late for a medical appointment, so I don't know if I can leave, but I would. Whatever we are in regards to the general budget, I would like to see us do the five mil reduction. I can be on the phone until I get to my appointment if that's the thing, but I do need to leave. I apologize.
There's nothing further. We can make that motion already. Is there something else you want to discuss?
All right. I just wanted a real quick, uh, report on where we're at for redistricting our county commission boundary lines.
There's a webinar that's gonna be put out by Aaron Burst, who's gonna be putting that out, and then we'll have to deal with that and have it decided before the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. And I knew that, but I thought it, the public needs to hear it, and then, um. We have, um, in January, petitions for elected. Officials is open, correct?
Yes.
So I just want to public notice that I will not be, uh, seeking a. Term to be reelected, uh. For my district and I am doing this so that those people out there. That, uh, might have some interest in it, have some time to consider whether or not they want to step into this battered box.
Okay.
So to speak. Thank you for the notice.
Thank you.
How many, how many years have you done this?
Too many. Twenty, it'll be twenty, so.
Yeah, I guess we gotta get back to the budget though to approve your.
Hey. I I would make the motion that we reduce whatever the correct term is by five mils. Uh, for our general budget for next year. Is that the correct terminology?
You can just say reduce the overall general, general budget by five mils and that should be fine because it'll bring it down.
So that's a million dollars.
Okay, you have a second?
I, I'll give it.
Okay, motion is second. Any discuss, other discussion?
So this is gonna be reducing taxes?
Yes.
But not to the amount that we added.
Go ahead.
Five mils from what?
From the.
Preliminary budgets for your preliminary levy?
From the general budget.
Yeah, from the preliminary budget line, the county general.
Now, that's what I wanted to make certain.
So overall, it's only gonna be about probably three point something mils.
Three point six eight, Gordon Mike.
So we were short nine hundred some thousand dollars on our budget that we had to cut.
Right, and now we want.
So we made cuts, but now we're still reducing our mils by a million?
Right.
Well, I mean, we open this up for discussion and go ahead and.
No, no, I just, I just asking as informational purpose, I guess I just.
If this dollar goes to six million approximately, I'm just gonna use round numbers so it's simple. We were at the end of the general or preliminary budget, we would have been at seven point three million. So we're gonna be down, um, we're gonna be def- deficit spending, spending the surplus, whatever you want to call it. According to my calculation, one point three plus any changes we may have made today in the last hour.
But we just had to, like Carlos said, we had to struggle to cut our budget by nine hundred thousand. Now all of a sudden, we're gonna take away income. So where are we gonna be at this year at this time, next year at this time?
Well, yes.
We'll be all right next year.
Well, yeah, if if we do this.
In two years, we'll have to raise the taxes again.
Well, no, not at a mill, you you wouldn't.
No, not if you went with the origin you had.
No, we, no. If we went to full ten mils, then yeah, in three, four years, you you'd have had to raise it.
It's easy for you to say, you're leaving.
Yeah, no, hey, I I still live here.
That's right.
So reducing it by what?
Five mil. I'll be the first one up there complaining.
Roll call vote then. Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner.
If somebody's.
Zander.
I don't know.
Commissioner Marsh.
No.
Commissioner Arthod.
No.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And then Sheriff, did you have something with this, uh, agreement proposal you gave me?
You'll have to sign it.
Okay, you don't need any further action on it though. Okay, anything else? Motion adjourned, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who's opposed?